Welcome everyone to regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Amber, could we have roll call?
Commissioner Merk?
Here.
Commissioner Foster?
Here.
Commissioner Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lajowski?
Here.
Vice Chair Jagiello?
Here.
Chair Zabilla?
Here. Okay, Commissioner Jagiello, can you lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're going to come to public communications. Public communications is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no actions can be taken at this meeting. I don't have any cards. So, okay. Then we'll move on to our consent items. Our, yeah, consent items, which are the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of February 3rd. Does anybody have any changes or concerns?
I was, I'm wondering if anybody would be opposed to continuing this to the next meeting.
Pulling them and continuing?
Yes.
The minutes?
Yes. I just, I personally haven't had time to review the minutes. I was so consumed with the hospital and everything else that I just, I haven't reviewed them. But, I'm-
That's a problem.
No. Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We continue the approval of the minutes until our next Planning Commission meeting.
All right. I will second the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Merk?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lajowski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Zabilla?
Yes. Okay, then we'll move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
I have visited all sites on tonight's agenda and have had no ex parte contacts.
I visited the hospital just yesterday.
I visited both sites and had no ex parte contacts.
I visited the hospital and had no ex parte contact.
I had visited both sites and did meet with Engineer Roddick, who gave us a tour of the site.
Us being Chair Zabilla and myself this afternoon. There's been no ex parte contact, and I am also familiar with cottages among the Flowers site, but I have not had any contact in that capacity.
Okay, so we'll move on to our first public hearing item, which is lot line adjustment of LA 15-01, variance, VAR 15-03, design review permit, DRP 15-03, and tree permit, T 15-12, for the merger of two lots into one, demolition of an existing 66-bed comprehensive care center and construction of a new, single-story, 75-bed comprehensive care center replacement facility, including additional parking, new secondary access drive, new landscaping, removal of 53 protected trees, and reduction in the amount of required open space and required setbacks at Ojai Community Memorial located at 1306 Maricopa Highway, APN 019-0-110-040-335 and -345. The general land, the general plan land use designation on the parcels are institutional, recreational, IR, and the zoning classification on the parcels are institutional, recreational, IR1 district. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15302 of the Sequel Guidelines for Class 2. Property owner, Memorial Health System, Representative Hadi Ashkari, Chief Administrative Officer, Ojai Valley Community Hospital, applicant Joey Kreglin, architect, HGA Architects and Engineers. This has continued from the January 20th and the February 3rd, 2016 Planning Commission meetings. We'd like to hear from staff, please.
Thank you. Good evening. So, as you can see in your packet, and as Commissioner Lajowski indicated, is a lot of material, and I'm sure you spent a long time going through it, so I'm going to try to walk you through this staff report and not spend too much time on it, but just enough so that the audience understands what's going on. And as you said before you tonight is a concept, excuse me, a design review permit and a lot line adjustment included, and a variance application and a tree permit. So I'm going to start with the overall project description, which is, this is a proposal on the Ojai Valley Community Hospital complex, which is a community-based healthcare facility, providing inpatient and outpatient care, skilled nursing facilities, or services, excuse me, and a 24-hour standby emergency room. Right now, there is an existing hospital on the campus side, some support building and facilities, and an existing community care facility. For you tonight is the proposal to rebuild this community care facility while allowing the existing one to remain on-site until the new one is built and can be occupied. And so with that comes, excuse me, a lot of site development issues, and such as drainage, undergrounding utilities, parking, access, et cetera. So that's why I'm going to try to walk you through this. So it's important to note that they are proposing to build a new 50,025-foot continuing care facility to replace the existing 18,233-square-foot skilled nursing facility. The baseline for most of the analysis that was done on this project was the baseline for what is included in the entire complex's overall licensing. So you'll see that at one time, the skilled, the actual acute facility had, was larger, had, in that it's licensed for more beds. And now it's been down to, I think it is, I think it's 25 beds now it's licensed for. And so they're asking while the bed, while the existing 66-bed skilled nursing facility replaces with a 75-bed facility, there's an offset from the drop in the hospital as it relates to their baseline in traffic and other, other issues relating with, with this project. So, and I'm trying to not make this complex, but it seems like I am, so let's keep on moving here. The new facility will have 34 semi-private patient rooms and seven private patient rooms. The overall building height will be 27 feet in height, and they will have a kitchen in this facility that will serve the entire complex, including the existing acute care hospital staff and visitor meals. So if we get an overall picture, and I know the applicant has prepared a PowerPoint, and they'll probably go over that with you, but we do have it available for questions, and I won't access it now through the report, but it is there for visuals, and we can put it on the TV once we're open for questions. So with that, I'm going to move on to, as we do with most projects that come before the Planning Commission, we talk about the general plan compatibility. I'll just mention that this, this property is owned, or is designated institutional, recreational on the city's land use map, and that we've provided the overall purpose statement of what the IR lands are intended to do, which is a variety of uses, mostly with an overall institutional or recreational character. And that is, so this project is consistent with that. It's important to note that the general plan indicates the maximum use intensity is .18 to .25 floor area ratio. This project is going to be compliant with that, the FAR requirement. In order to determine that the project overall is compatible with the general plan, we would like to note that, just like the different elements in the general plan that we have to analyze and compare to this project, such as circulation, air quality, that type of thing that's in the general plan, the conservation element, this applicant has provided a number of reports, such as noise, traffic, parking, your cultural resources. Some of those, or mostly all of them have been provided as a supplement to this, this report, except for cultural resources, and we do understand why with that and the confidentiality of that report. So we think with an analysis and summaries and the reports that are provided as, as an attachment to this report, that we can find that this project is consistent with the general plan. One, the overall purpose of the zone district or land use district that it's in, as well as the supplemental elements of the general plan. And then we move on to the zoning ordinance consistency. And we do note that this property was, is subject to the Maricopa specific plan, which has basically been incorporated into the zoning ordinance. And so while we do note that it was a specific plan, it's not a standalone document, it is incorporated into the zoning regulations that we've analyzed for you tonight. This project would be subject to the TCO overlay, but we're not, and I think this has been very clear in the staff report, we're looking at the two parcels that are behind, the one that fronts the actual acute facility and has its frontage on Maricopa, and ergo as such, we're not, we're not analyzing the driveway cuts or the access of that, that first parcel that you can see on your zoning map, which I provided for you. You can actually see the zoning and the parcels as they're divided there. So with that, moving on, we'd just like to go through, we've provided a table of setbacks and where they're compliant and where they're not compliant. And so with that, we don't think that there needs to be any more time spent on those. It's a pretty self-explanatory. We would just like to point out that there's a lot of constraints on this piece of property, including maximum developmental area, the floor ratio, and the open space requirement. So let's focus on the open space requirement. The open space requirement, this parcel is required to have 50% open space, as well as some open space buffers that would, that would run vertically, I guess is how you describe it, the length of the parcel to the adjacent parcels on either side of the property line. And this is where the project is non-compliant with the, the, one, the setbacks, the open space buffer setbacks, and two, the overall requirement. And as such, they've applied for a variance. So the staff report clearly just moves you right into the variance and why they've applied for a variance and why we've found the findings for this variance. And those are spelled out in the staff report, and what really the request amounts to is a reduction of, from 50% down to 43% open space, and to allow parking and access drives within the 35 and 25-foot open space buffers. We think that we've provided in the staff report, and these same findings are found in your resolution for adoption, of why we think this prop, the property does qualify for a variance. And I can read those into the record if anybody is interested, but I think I'm just going to leave it with that and allow you to ask questions on it. But I will give you an overall viewpoint here, which is, the parcels are fairly long and narrow. The 35 and 25-foot buffer does restrict the development potential of these properties. And reading the intent of the open space, it appears as though the intent was more in keeping with the recreational uses that are allowed in this zone district, which would have a large percentage of the, of the project site secured in open space for perpetuity. In this case, it's an institutional use, and the western, eastern property lines and the buffers along, along those areas don't really serve to provide true open space, they're not visible from the public right-of-way. And in this particular case, the rear of the property is where there is an open space natural area. And so they don't really do anything to preserve what we're really trying to preserve is that back area that's undeveloped with the oaks on it. So, and with the, with the, and also, I guess I should say that also in doing an analysis of the variance and other properties that are in the IR2, and you can kind of look at your zoning map, we, I gave you full sets of those zoning maps in your packet, and I'm also giving you just a snippet, a vicinity area adjacent to the hospital. You can see parcels that you, that you see in the same color in the same zone district, and you can familiarize yourself with those. And as it states in the staff report, we don't believe that the other properties in the same vicinity in the same zone are actually providing these, these buffers. And so with that, you know, we were recommending approval of this, of the variance. Let's see, moving on to the lot line adjustment analysis, this clearly is a case of, we're calling it a lot line adjustment, it's really a merger. The city doesn't have a merger ordinance, so it's done by lot line adjustment. But clearly, this is just a matter of them merging two parcels, not all three, but two, so they'll, they'll have, they'll go from three to two, to facilitate this development, moving property lines under, out from under where there would be buildings, moving utilities that run down between the two parcels to facilitate this development. Once again, and to point out that it's really important that we understand that they cannot demo and rebuild where they are, they have to keep the existing facility running. So this is, this is somewhat drives how, one, the variance, the open space, how the whole lot is developed. And so then moving on, we're going to talk about the public art requirement. As you know, this has been something that's come up recently, so we want to make sure that, we highlight it in every project that comes before the city. Just note that there are exceptions to the public art requirement, and one of those requirements is that, or excuse me, exemptions, is it applies to projects taken, undertaken for seismic retrofitting, and this project does qualify for that. This is what, this project will bring the skilled nursing facility up to seismic requirements. And so we just want to point that out, that the project, hospital project falls under exemption too, as the project proposal is to reconstruct the comprehensive care center facility, which is not currently, does, currently does not meet seismic standards. And so we'll be asking for you to concur with that analysis. And then we go on to the tree permit analysis, and we will mention that, that I think the, the applicant provided a rather robust tree report for your consideration. They are proposing to take a tree permit out that will allow them to remove up to 53 trees on the site of all protected trees, they are all protected trees, that they're requesting to take out. We'd like you to understand that this, the applicant has been very proactive, providing a tree report that looked at every tree slated for removal, valued those trees, but the intent of the applicant is really to try to keep as many trees as they can possibly during this construction project. So they valued them, something does happen, they are, they're taking responsibility for ensuring, documenting the health of that tree at this point before they start any construction, and taking responsibility if the tree ends up meaning to come out. But it is ultimately their goal to take out as few as they possibly can, and to protect them as much as they can. And I think that is evident if you read the tree report, including the staff's resolution, which has a number of tree mitigation conditions added into the approval for you tonight. And then so moving on to circulation and traffic, we just want to point out that, that again, you know, the issue with the TCO, staff's analysis of if they do or do not have to comply with the TCO development standards. We've also included an analysis of the site distance review. They are proposing a new driveway along Cuyama, and there is, you know, issues with site distances along Cuyama. I would like to say that this second entrance point off Cuyama has always been presented by the applicant as an emergency secondary entrance into the complex. We would all know, if you've been out to the hospital complex, that, that they can only take access off Maricopa right now, and if there was something, something catastrophic that happened, the hospital does, only has this one entrance in, even though there's two driveways, there's still basically the same entrance down the hospital. This is important that they serve the community by providing a second access that would be open and available at such times as the, the first one is compromised, however that would be. It's not intended to be a second entrance for those who are coming to the hospital or visiting people at the community care, or at the skilled nursing facility, it is really meant to, to function as a emergency secondary access point during certain situations. That's how it's meant to be. And that's how it's been analyzed, that's how it's been conditioned. And, and we're still working with them regarding exactly where that driveway pops out on Cuyama, and we've placed that condition. If you've read your conditions in the resolution, you'll know that there, we're fine-tuning exactly where that placement goes to provide the safest exiting and entrance off of Cuyama into the facility or out of a facility. So they will be fine-tuning that and submitting it to the staff to, for our recommendation, or I guess for our approval, subsequent to this approval. This is something we're still working out with them. So, I know there's probably a lot of technical data in that, in the, in the analysis, for the site analysis. And then we also provided for you the issue of just traffic in general, the increase in traffic, or the not increase in traffic, as you, as you may have read the report. We're all aware of the general plan policies we have regarding, you know, peak hours and additional trips onto, out into the county. And so the applicant provided a trip generation analysis, and they did it both on the threshold of SEQA and the threshold from the general plan, which was, or baseline from general plan, which was 1989. And you can see that, the analysis yields that there, because of the offset between the beds and the, and the acute facility and increasing in the skilled nursing facility, there's just an offset. So they're, they're not generating anything that would then not be compliant one with SEQA or the general plan policies. And with that, we talk about parking, and just to bring this up, that again, that, you know, the hospital is illegal, non-conforming use out there as it relates to parking. We didn't, we left that as a standalone, non-conforming uses to parking. In other words, it doesn't meet today's requirement for parking. And we're not, that front parcel really isn't under consideration tonight, other than to give you context for how we did some of the baselines and context for how the, the site overall has circulation. So with that, the analysis for parking was really done based on this new complex, the new bed count, et cetera, and, and they're compliant with the code, as you see in the table. However, their parking management, or parking analysis did ask that they provide parking management strategies, and that we're in concurrence with that because of the complete streets policies the city has, and actually, you know, encouraging people to use different modes of transportation. You can see these strategies that are down here. We have conditioned this project to incorporate these suggestions that their, their traffic engineer had for them, but leaving it up to the hospital to come up with a comprehensive program that include, could include these, or may have other strategies that are similar to these that they could, that they can use. So we're not trying to be heavy-handed, we're just encouraging them to actually come up with a parking management plan. And then again, that will be something they'll submit with, through us, and we'll do review and approval at the staff level. So then we've analyzed the noise, and that, that they're compliant with the noise limits that we find here in the general plan and in our zoning ordinance. They've provided documentation, and we've forwarded on to you to show their compliance with that. And then they are compliant with their cultural resources, they have done the phase one, they've done some exploration out there, et cetera, et cetera. We are the, we have provided the conditions of approval to a representative of the tribe, and they've concurred with our conditions we're placing on this particular project. And so we've, they're compliant there. And then moving on, trash enclosure, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Utilities, they are undergrounding utilities, we've just pointed out that the code requires the underground from their point on. There's a poll that you're going to see out there, that poll distributes utilities to more than just the hospitals, that poll will remain. They're not required to go beyond their utilities. And then we've got, the applicant submitted a photometric plan for our consideration, that's been analyzed, they're found to be in compliance. They have a phasing plan, and that's part of their conditions of approval. And again, trying to work out the phasing with the hospital so they can occupy the new construction, the new building, and, and without having to comply with all their conditions of approval, which is a little bit different, you know, phasing has to happen. These, these phasing, phase 1A, 1B, and 2 and 3 have all been worked out with the hospital to keep them, you know, moving through the different jurisdictions they have to work through, including OSHPOD, the city, and going from one licensing facility to the next, and then, you know, decommissioning that one and demoing it, and then building the rest of the parking. So it's a little bit complex in how that all flows. We hope the phasing plan explains that satisfactorily to you. And then finally, we, the environmental review, I think, is very self-explanatory. There's a very specific SEQA exemption for this type of use. And what we did with the analysis of that is we made sure that there wasn't any impact beyond what's described in SEQA that would kick them out of their, of their category exemption. So it's had full review. You can see there's a lot of studies and documentation that have been provided to document their, their exemption. And then I'll say finally one more time, we just provided for you that you do have some correspondence in from a member of the public, and it is in regard to the tree that is adjacent. If you look at your tree report, and those trees that are slated, I think in your large or your small set of plans, you have a, an exhibit that shows all the trees slated for removal. And I think you'll see that this one, many of them are adjacent to the property lines, so they're kind of, you know, are between two properties. And the physical root and tree may be on the property, the hospital property, but the trees do go over the property line and do have effect on neighboring properties. And so what we've asked you to do in this particular case is if you, the neighbors here wants to speak to the issues they have these trees, that if the tree, the decision of the commission is to take the removal of that tree out from the applicant's control, and you condition him to remove it, that you be taken into consideration of whether or not that the applicant is responsible for the $16,900 value of that tree. Well, I'd just like to point out, I think we've put this in the staff, staff report, that one of the issues with the mitigations in removing so many protected trees is, is the value of all these trees. It's about $466,000. It's really important for the applicant to understand where we're going with all these, the mitigations and the value of those trees. Staff's, if you've read the conditions of approval, and I'll just highlight this for you, that staff has got a condition in, in the staff report, I mean, I'm sorry, in the resolution, that's, that in, is written to give some flexibility. One, we don't know how many trees ultimately will be removed by the applicant. Two, we don't know the offset of what he's planting the value-wise, because that's, you know, still outstanding. And three, we don't know what other mitigations have to be, or done, such as pruning, et cetera, to the, the urban forests in the rear that wants protection. And we want the flexibility to allow the applicant to use some of those funds on his own property. He, where the condition is going to be, I think, and I can find it for you if you like, I think it's like a 10-year responsibility he has to maintain these trees, you know, because we're always concerned about construction activities, and it doesn't necessarily mean that a year or two down the line, we know that that tree's been compromised. Sometimes it's three or four years. So, you know, he's asking for flexibility in adopting that condition, the way staff and the hospital has come to consensus on how that mitigation would work. And with that, I think, I hope I hit all the highlights, and I think the only thing, after reading this, or doing this whole report, it was just like, I think the only thing that I noticed that, that maybe might be missed in your consideration is the actual style of the facility. I mean, obviously, it's keeping with the same style they had before, but you will see it on the, in the applicant's PowerPoint. So I'll let them handle that portion of it for you.
I want to compliment you, Director Walt, for boiling this voluminous report into something that was really cogent and clear and concise and readable. Does anybody have any questions for staff right now?
I did. I noticed you just went over, brushed through, or didn't address the landscape section. I wasn't sure if there was any comments from staff on that part of the report.
So the, so the landscape is, so the applicant, you know, we, we've met with the applicant numerous times, and the issue with the, with the landscaping is, again, still getting a fully vetted landscape plan at this point to go before the commission. This is, in, in the industry here, applicants prefer to have their entitlements before they go into the phase of fully developing a landscape plan. And so we kind of went back and forth a little bit on that, and, and, you know, the compromise, or what the applicant is asking for consideration is the, the statement in there where it says, you know, he's that he will submit a landscape plan, not only compliant with Title 12 of the city's municipal code, but also the two executive orders that the governor has issued. This is really important because while we did adopt- This is really important because while we did adopt the, the Governor Brown's executive order, and as the new modified Welo, it is not showing up in the city's Article 12 in the municipal code due to the way we adopted it. You know, the, the old one still shows up, and if you, if you look up Article 12. So, it's really important that, that he had, they have made a commitment on your landscape plans. You should note, up on the right-hand corner, that they, they will submit comply, in compliance with both those Article 12 and executive orders. And so, we feel like that, that that satisfies the intent of having a fully-vetted landscape plan. You do know, we all do know, we're working with this new modified Welo, it's pretty intense, what, what they need to do. And at this point, they wanted to make sure they had their entitlements before they worked, they actually worked into that huge amount of work that it takes to do the Welo.
So, basically, because we haven't updated Article 12, the new Welo that was adopted December 1st, 2015, will take precedence over Article 12?
Yeah, go ahead. He's tapping me here.
I'm, I'm happy to tap in on that one. And yes, the new state Welo, which for the audience, Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, was originally adopted in 2008, and has recently, with the new drought and the governor's executive orders directing the State Department of Water Resources to update the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, as of December 1st, 2015, that took effect statewide and preempts Article 12. So, the city, the city's current Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance regulations, which are in Article 12, and were based on the previous state model, are now preempted as of December 1st, 2015. And now, all in the city are required to comply with the new state Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. And some cities adopted local amendments to that, but Ojai proceeded with just letting the state's model be adopted by default. And so, that's where the, the issue arises. And as you know, the new model is significantly more extensive in what it requires than the previous state model.
Just have a question about the public art requirement. I know, so, even though I understand exemption to and remodeling, repair, reconstruction of structures to comply with earthquake seismic safety code, I notice there's more beds and more landscaping and all that, kind of beyond the original structure which they're repairing. So, I'm wondering if you could talk to that a little bit more. Might the, the improvements and site improvements, construction beyond the original replacement be subject to public art?
So, the public art requirements are kind of tricky, because everyone seems to have kind of a little bit different perspective on them. So, it's the building permit that triggers the, the public art, not the discretionary permit. We've been asked to, to put it in the discretionary permit, to make people aware of it, but it really does trigger a building permit time. This particular project is not going to pull a building permit through our office, it's going to pull its building permit through OSHPOD. So, with that said, I don't believe any of the other outstanding permits that are going to be issued, even if they were for landscaping, correct, Mr. Stewart, are going to qualify or trigger the art. It's very specific on building valuation. And so, if the intent was for the art, public art to pertain to the entire site, or all the improvements or offsite improvements, that's not really how it's written. So, and you concur? Go ahead.
There's two issues for this public art project. One is the issue that Ms. Walt just identified, which is that building permits for a hospital do not go through the city, they go through the State Office of Planning and Development, which is referred to as OSHPOD. They run hospital building permits. So, under a strict reading of the code, they wouldn't be triggered at all. But independent of that, and it's a second reason, that, to answer your question directly, the exemption that's in the code in Section 416 dot 25 subdivision, pardon me, 416 205 subdivision B, doesn't have a limitation on replacement or reconstruction, only to the extent replaced. It doesn't have the limitation that, I think, your, your questioning does it have, or does it not have it. It's simply worded, replacement of a structure, if it's intended to comply with earthquake seismic standards, or to deal with a damaged building in the event of a disaster, is pulled out of the public art requirement, with no limitation to just the value or the size of what was replaced.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we'll move now on to the public, public hearing, and we'd like to hear from the applicant first, please.
Good evening, commissioners, staff members of the community. My name is Hadi Lashkar, I'm the chief administrative officer at the Ojai Valley Community Hospital. We're really excited to be here tonight. I'd like to introduce, I'm joined by members of our team. To my left is Joey Kreglin with HGA Architects, Scott Boydston with Rasmussen and Associates, our president and CEO, Gary Wild, is with the Community Memorial Health System, as well as our chief operating officer, Adam Tenell. Also present, we have Tim Wolfe, a member of our, the Ojai Valley Community Hospital Foundation, and I know Dr. Jim Halverson, who's the president of our foundation, as well as the medical director of our skilled nursing facility, was seeing patients tonight, but hopefully will, is going to try to be here tonight as well. We're, we're here tonight seeking approval for our 75-bed replacement skilled nursing facility, we call it our Continuing Care Center. March 18th will mark a year that, since we've last been to the, the planning commission, and over the course of the, the last year, our teams worked really closely with city staff refining our application and submitting additional information and completing and expanding the studies that's been requested, that's included in your packets tonight. During this time, we work closely with our neighbors, the hitching post, some of our neighbors are here as well, as well as the Creekside condos. We also work closely with local cultural resources, and we really appreciate that relationship as we've been going through this process. I, I promise to keep my, my comments short tonight, I just wanted to touch on a couple of points. I know Ms. Walt's prepared a pretty extensive staff report, and our, Joey Kreglin, our architect's going to be presenting as well. But there's a couple of points I just wanted to highlight, if I could, before we, we go into that, that presentation. The first, as you may recall, that the project was initially replacing our 66-bed skilled nursing facility with a 60-bed skilled nursing facility. At the time, when, when we were here about a year ago, we explained that we wanted to actually build more beds, but cost was the deterrent, and that was actually keeping us from, from building more beds. Approximately six months ago, as we were going through the process, as we've been all along, we've been working with a local contractor to keep us abreast of what the cost of all this is going to be. And we were, we were quite shocked when the, the cost had reached $14 million, and really had to work to really refine that number back, and we were able to get it down to 13.3. But at 13.3, the added costs with no additional revenues coming in because of no additional beds, really began to make the model economically unfeasible. And so, as we went back and worked with our team, we believed that adding the additional 15 beds, while incrementally more costly, would actually provide additional services that are required and needed to our community, but also help offset the additional costs with the revenue that would come in from the additional beds. So, we think it's a, it's a model that's feasible. Thankfully, the design was always built to be expandable. We figured you, you get to do something like this once every 50 or 60 years, and so there's a lot of thought initially that was put into the planning of the design. And so, we, we think we, we addressed that quite well. I'd also like to kind of finish with a request and, and a parting thought to the, to the commission and to the community. Sometime tonight or tomorrow, go to medicare.gov/nursinghomecompare, and I could share the, the link to, to staff as well. What you'll find is that our skilled nursing facility is rated five out of five stars in, in quality, as well as overall care. And this is the care that we provide, getting emotional here, but every day in our existing building for our, our community. And while we're here tonight to, to discuss the, and receive approval for the, literally the bricks and mortars of the building, what would arguably be what a state-of-the-art, modern facility, and one of the most state-of-the-art and modern skilled nursing facilities in our county, it's the care that's provided in the building that, that really is most important to our, our patients and their family members. Healthcare buildings are inherently built, designed, and built and designed inside-out, and I think that there's a lot of thought with the focus groups that we went through to really ensure that, that that, our building is going to be that, that state-of-the-art facility that our, our patients and our communities are really going to benefit from. And so, we, I believe that we've accomplished this with a lot of the work that our, our teams put into the design and with the completion of this building. The community's going to have not only a, a five-star rated overall quality institution, but a building and environment that really matches that. And so, that's, that's really what we're, what we're trying to do here tonight. So, I, I know there were some questions on, on the art component, I'd love to, to comment on that if I could, as well as the, the said tree, and maybe I'll just comment on those two, two things really quickly. And regarding to the public art component, the, we, we addressed this with the front entrance remodel, the exemption I actually believe is, is because of our not-for-profit status. At the time, I believe it was Commissioner Hirsch with the, with the Art Commission is who we had worked with, she actually chairs our Operation Picasso, and, and we, we had received that, that exemption as we went through that process for our front entrance remodel. We, we work really closely, we have an Operation Picasso art team that has done some phenomenal work. I invite all of the commissioners to come and see our public, the, the art that we have displayed, it's our private collection that, that we have here at the Ojai Valley Community Hospital, as well as our distinct part skilled nursing facility. And so, though we had that exemption with the front entrance remodel, we, we work closely with the Operation Picasso team. We had some beautiful sculpture that was donated, that was included as our front entrance project, and we hope to kind of, even though we're exempt through that process, to still be a leader in the community and work with the team, and, and try to incorporate those designs as we go through with, with our skilled nursing facility. We, we feel strongly that art is a major part of healing, and, and where it's a commitment that we're really interested in, but just simply, the exemption is from the not-for-profit status, is my understanding. The second thing with the trees, the, the 53 trees are conservatively stated in that they're overstated. We don't want actually to, to take out the, that, that many trees, but we want to be, we wanted to be conservative and overstated upfront in terms of our efforts, and as we've shared with city staff, all of our efforts are going to be to try to preserve as many of the trees as we can, because not only is it the right thing to do for the community, but there's a cost implication to, to the hospitals, we go through that process as well. The, the said tree that, that's mentioned, incidentally, actually, the, the neighbor contacted us, hoping that that tree is a tree that would be removed. And, and when we went back and looked at our plans, we actually think it's a tree that could be saved. And so, that, that then becomes a little bit of an issue, because if, if the, the neighbor wants the tree removed, and there's a cost implication to having the tree removed, and yet it's a tree that can be saved, we, you know, we don't think that that cost should have to fall in with sole responsibility of the hospital. So, that's, I think that's, that's a little bit of clarification on, on those two items. So, I'll, I'll pass it over to Joey, he's put a, a short presentation together as well.
Thank you, Hadi. Good evening, commissioners. First, what we maybe want to start with is, as Hadi mentioned, we were here 11 months ago for the preliminary review, and so, since then, a thank you to staff, because they've been really working closely with us for all of that data that's out there, the reports to back up either the environmental analysis, or other components, to make sure that we're either in compliance with SEQA, or also the municipal code as well. So, there's a lot of effort that went in there, and without that, we probably wouldn't be as prepared as we are. What we want to do is just do a, a quick walkthrough of the, of the plans, they're really the images that are in your package, so we didn't want to recreate any new graphics or any new information, but maybe walk through a little bit of, you know, orient everybody that's listening and watching, but also maybe talk a little bit about some of those constraints, so that if you have any questions about why we place the buildings where we are, what our strategy was, there was a lot of different things that went into that, so we want to make sure that those are clear and we're able to answer those as well. So, we'll try to run through this quickly, and then get to a broader discussion. So, first, just a, we thought we'd start with a, a quick aerial of the existing site plan. I'll, I'll kind of work from right to left, which is actually south to north when you're looking at the image. What you see down in the lower right-hand corner is the existing hospital. The, the image here is actually from Google Earth, it was actually during the time the entry project was underway, so it's not quite up to date yet, but that project has been completed. But off of Maricopa, what you heard staff references, that's where the primary entry is, and, and it's going to stay there. But as you work northerly on the site, you run into the two other existing buildings on the site. So, right in the center of the image, on the upper side, there's a small support building for the hospital, and the, the existing Continuing Care Center. And then, kind of in the lower section of the center is the existing building that we're proposing to replace. As you work towards the site, you see the brown area in the middle, and you see the green trees that are in there as well. When we talk about the trees, we went out there, and I think we cataloged somewhere over 150, in terms of the full inventory, and we're requesting the removal of about 53 of those, and 35 of those are oaks, but they, they tend to be in the center of the site, where the brown area is, and then also around the existing Continuing Care Center, because once we tear that down, put in parking lots and put in new trees, that is the general area. When you work to the north of the site, the, the natural grade starts to slope up towards Kuama Road, and that's where this, we'll, we'll say the existing oak tree grove is, if you will, that we'd like to try to maintain. So, our development opportunity really starts to, starts to narrow, because as you can see, we have some constraints on the site, both on the north and the south side. So, to keep both the hospital and the Continuing Care Center operational, we had to get creative of where we place that and how we place the building to maintain access. A little bit of, a little bit of imagery, working on the top, that's, that's actually that area in the center of the site. You can see some trees, but it's, it's largely open, with the exception of the very far north side where you see all the trees. That's the upper left-hand picture. The, the right-hand picture on the upper row is Kuama Road, so that's where those oak trees get much more dense, and that's where we want to preserve that. And then, as part of the mitigation plan that staff mentioned, ongoing maintenance of those trees. One of the things about the trees, and I think the ARPRIS report does cover this, is that, you know, some of them, they have sort of a natural process, so, so they're in varied states of health, some are in very good health, some are in medium health, and some, you know, may deteriorate over time. And part of the recommendations is to maintain that area, but let them take their natural course. And so, part of that mitigation is, we want to be able to manage that as that goes forward. On the lower, the lower part is the left-hand side, that's the existing entry. Straight down that driveway is the existing Continuing Care Center, it's, it's back off the site in the center. And then, on the lower right-hand corner, that's the actual new entry and the, and the renovations that have happened. When we talk about the architecture vernacular, it's going to be very similar in context. We have some images at the end of the presentation. There's been some subtle adjustments, I think both based on feedback we received when we were here 11 months ago, but also comments, you know, from post-construction, if you will, and feedback that the hospital's gotten. So, we've tried to address that a little bit with some of the, with some of the components. So, this is the, in green, so this is the site plan that's in your package. We've, we've narrowed it down to just the two parcels that staff is referring to, that we're, that we're asking to merge together, to, to be able to manage a couple of different components. One, you'll see two dashed lines running down the middle of the site, that's where the existing utility poles run. So, they run on poles above ground, and they run right down the middle. In fact, all the utilities do, so whether it's water, firewater, sewer, everything runs right down the middle. So, we have to move those. Working with Southern California Edison, we are rerouting those and undergrounding those from the pole that sort of goes off at an angle on the left side, and to, to serve the facility. And then, we are relocating underground the other, the other wet and dry utilities. The, the green component in the middle of the site, that is the proposed replacement facility. And then, up in the, right above that, you'll see, it's just in a dashed outline, because we haven't put the 15 beds in there yet, but that is those additional beds from what you saw in our previous presentation. It's 30, 34 semi-private rooms and seven private rooms. Our goal was to get a mix of 10% based on, based on the clinical models, in terms of how they want to run the facility. But you can see these little wings, or these little arms that run east and west, up and down the building. Those are really the residential pods, if you will, that go around the building. So, in between there, that's where courtyards are planned to be, so as, as you have the natural light and, and windows within the patient rooms, they're always looking out onto a courtyard of some kind. So, all the, all the residential places have a, have an environment that's not either facing a parking lot or other, other types of components. Down in the lower right-hand corner is the dashed outline of the existing facility that's going to be removed, and we'll just run through a couple of phasing plans. The way we've structured this and placed the building... The way we've structured this and placed the building is that, on the left side, we tried to avoid that steep slope, cutting into the bank, removing more trees. One of the advantages of that is it helps us balance our site a little bit, minimize import and export off the site. We're not saying that there's not going to be any, but our goal right now is we've planned kind of a balanced site, but we're trying to make sure that building is in the right place to minimize that as, to the extent possible. So, the building down in the corner that we're going to remove, one of the constraints is we're trying not, what we've proposed in the planning, is we're not removing any existing parking stalls during that construction process. So, at no time in the phases will it be less stalls than there is now, so we're always adding stalls as we go. So, that was another constraint that we had, is trying to maintain adequate parking and adequate access. The other challenge was, is on the, on the north side of the existing building, that's where services come in, so we always had to have access to that. So, now you can start to see the window of where we placed the building, it started to shrink quite a bit, but we were able to place it in there. And as we go to, this is really what we call our first phase for Phase 1A and 1B, which is the replacement facility. So, Phase 1A is the initial 60 beds we proposed, and Phase 1B is the additional 15 beds. We labeled them that way because our state approvals, we have submitted our plans to the state for review, and what we are is we're working with them on how to include the additional 15 beds. So, in yellow, what we've shown and illustrated is, in Phase 1, we want to build the full building, all 75 beds, and the yellow represents the circulation of the parking areas that we want to complete as part of that installation. One, we've got to make sure we provide new access to the replacement facility and maintain the same access to the old one. So, you can see there is some parking that starts to increase, and then we're trying to make sure we have the pathways open as we transition patients from the old facility to the new facility, once it's constructed. In Phase 2, we would then isolate the existing facility, once it's licensed and cleared for patient care, and then we would come back and tear down the existing facility and then increase more parking down in that, down in that lower right-hand corner. Speaking of, so landscaping a little bit, we did include in the package, I just wanted to touch base on that. You know, currently, what we, what we had proposed, I think we put a pallet in there, so whether we were looking at shrubs, ornamental grasses, or, and trees as well, in terms of trying to quantify the trees. I think right now, we're looking at about 140 trees that we're proposing to plant, so whether that be part of the replacement of those that we're tearing down, or part of just the lands, the general landscaping that's going on in the courtyards or other parts of the building, we're in those reins. And I think we've tried to call out the species in terms of their general location of where they're going to be around the buildings. And then, and then if you look at the notes around, we've also tried to explain what kind of trees, ground covers, and planting that we want to put in the courtyards. We just haven't detailed the layout of what those are, but our goal was to identify plants that are either, well, to the extent possible, they're California native, or, you know, low or moderate water usage. As staff noted, that the irrigation plans and the final landscaping plans that come in will be compliant with not only your own municipal code, but also the executive orders. So, the proposed exterior concepts and the architecture vernacular, as you can see, it's the similar mission style that was used for the entry remodel and generally consistent with some of the areas. This is actually a picture looking towards the main entry. A little bit, you know, we tried to keep the scale down, a little more residential scale, similar to the existing, the existing facility. The main entry is the tallest point, where you see the circular window, so that's a covered entry as you go into, as you go into the facility. That's a little over 26 feet tall at that point. And then, as you look towards the left side, that's where one of the first residential units is. That's much lower in scale, and it's about 20 feet tall at that point. The roof has been designed, so we have the mission-style sloped roof on the front, but that's actually acts as a parapet, so behind that are all the mechanical units. The area that covers the mechanical units is about six and a half feet tall, so we've sized the height and slope of that roof, so that it's taller than the units that we're proposing to provide heat and air. And on the backside of the facility, this happens to be a picture that looks like almost straight at the rehab area. Part of the goal is, is not only to have, you know, healing gardens in between the residential units, but when you talk about the rehab component, the idea here is that you can also do rehab inside, but also it could be part of the landscape process, so that if they need to use stairs, or handrails, or other types of training, they can do that also in an outdoor environment. So, it's been placed so that we can manage that and also keep the gardens between the activity spaces and the residential units. So, this is, the last image here is the proposed floor plan. If you look at that, you'll see the gray color that go around the exterior of the building, those are the actual residential units. They are a combination of the semi-private and private rooms. They're 15-bed units, so as you go around, each one of those has 15 beds. What you see between them is the purple, which is really the staff support space, so it's nurse stations, clean rooms, equipment rooms, that are centrally located to serve, serve the housing units. And then, on the far side is the kitchen in the green, and as staff mentioned, that's actually sized to serve not only the 75 beds in the facility, but also the 25 beds in the hospital. So, it's replacing the existing kitchen that's in, that does that now, and it's sized to handle that capacity. In fact, it's actually sized to handle a little more. As Heidi mentioned, we looked at a number of different bed models, so it's actually a little bigger than the 75 beds. So, thank you.
Anybody else in the applicant land want to speak? Okay. Do we have questions for the applicant right now, or do we want Commissioner Nolling?
Yeah, we've got lots of questions.
Okay. Commissioner Nolling?
Okay. So, somebody might want to come back up. Well, first of all, I wanted to say, you know, overall, the submittal here was, you know, very thorough, and the landscape is a little, little bit lacking, but I spent some time, and I understand what's going on there. But generally, I'm for the project. I'm happy that we have this existing facility, and then we have the opportunity to have an even better facility. But I do have some questions, and I think I'll start with the trees. I also wanted to thank you for coming forward and saying that you want to preserve as many trees as you can, because, you know, first you read that, and you go, wow, 35 coaslive oaks, and, you know, so many trees are coming out. So, I just had a couple of comments or questions. Number one would be, what has been your maintenance practice to date for, let's say, your existing trees in that area around the facility, and then in addition, the oaks in the back, up on the slope towards Kuama?
I don't know if, yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know offhand. I know, I don't want to say annually, but I do know that we regularly, as we have had folks come through, we'll have kind of the maintenance of the trees, both on the hospital property. I don't know on the back lot how often. I do know, I could talk within the last four years, I know that we've come in and we've been maintaining them as we've been going through, and I think that's part of our process as we go through in all the new trees that we have planted. That's going to be a part, we'll have to make sure that we're maintaining them appropriately.
Right. Yeah, I did notice they were pruned recently, but, you know, going through the report and then walking through the site, that specifically, a lot of the oaks on the upper slope look stressed. Of course, we're in a drought condition. I realize there's been a fire there, and it's a mixed community forest there. Once again, you brought up those young trees, all the way to, you know, a big trunk that's, you know, decaying, but I'm so glad that you left it there and letting it do its thing. All right. So, that was one of the first questions I had, was on the maintenance. And then, so we don't really have in the report a proposed mitigation. In other words, there's a dollar value for the trees, and I realize things could be changing as you go into construction documents and what have you. So, I was hoping that that would be, you know, some sort of an offer on the mitigation there, but it wasn't there. But I would also propose, or I'd like to bring to the discussion, the possibility of replacing some of the ornamental trees that you have on the plan with coaslive oaks or natives that are being displaced. And there are quite a few opportunities for you to do that. So, for instance, you have the pear that's going on the emergency drive going up to Kuama, and that's right in the middle of the oak forest. I think that's a no-brainer, that it could easily be more oaks. I also wanted to stress or ask if you considered transplanting some of the oaks that are, of course, in good condition, and I realize some of them are in lesser condition and probably should come out. You know, that's common practice, you want to maintain a healthy forest. But that would be something I think you may want to explore. I'm not saying that you have to transplant every single one, they all may not be that quality, but as part of the mitigation, actually, it would probably reduce your mitigation fee by doing so. All right? At least I've experienced that in the past. Staff would have to let you know if that was indeed true. I would also say, suggest that you source, if you do, for your coaslive oaks, and some of them are specified on your plan, but any additional ones be sourced from local nurseries that are actually using acorns to start their trees from a local gene pool, because you've got that nice forest up in the top, and that's pretty spectacular and special. So, I know that I personally have done that on local projects, so it's doable. And I noticed the size of the trees you're specking out, you know, they tend to be smaller, but that's another thing that I would recommend. Let me see, what else have I got here? I mentioned the transplanting. And then, I guess the other thing would be to explore a combination of things. So, new planting, replacing some of the ornamentals that you've called out, ornamental trees too, actually natives, coaslive oak, or even corcus labada, the valley oak. The transplanting, the new trees, what am I missing here? Changing out some of the proposed trees. And then, possibly paying into the city mitigation fund too, because we always, we do like to plant new trees around Ojai. So, Wednesday, I really want to thank you for coming forward with that, just being open about not taking out, you know, a quantity of such trees if you didn't have to, and being open to suggestions on that. So, look, did you have a question or comment?
I just, I can comment on the trees a little bit. I think you're spot on, on getting more live oaks and valley oaks
Right.
in the, in the, in the plan. We've done that on the front side of the, when we did the front part of the remodel at the hospital, adding more coas and live oaks.
Right.
And we've worked with Lisa Phelps
Right.
on that. And really, this plan needs to evolve back into her hands to, to look at, you know, the plant pallet and the local sources, and we plan to do that and pursue that. We're a little hesitant about transplanting the oaks. It takes a long time
Well, yeah.
to box them, and we don't have quite that, that timeframe to do that. And then, there is, I've been experienced at Thomas Aquinas College for the last 20 years, and we've tried to do that a couple of times, and it's really sort of iffy, and you spend a lot of money
Right. You have to do it correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, that was one of my questions. I have so many questions, I didn't find it, but you're right. One of them was, what was your estimated start date for construction? And then, backing it out, could you feasibly do the transplanting? Because I know you need to, there's a procedure, and you have to start sideboxing and root pruning, and, yeah. So, but just thought I would mention that. Oh, the other question I had too, or comment was, for instance, in the new parking lot, you've got, I think, I think it's 30, hard to read that small plan, but about 30 cork oaks, which aren't native, it's a great tree, I love it, but I'm just, that's another opportunity that maybe you could use coaslive oaks to offset the ones that you're removing.
Lisa likes the cork.
Corks are beautiful, they are. I mean, you could harvest cork if you needed to. So, I had that question, and then I had a question about the drainage, especially the area that's up in the oak area, up on the slope towards Kuama. I was wondering if you could just explain
Yes.
how that's going to function?
So, I'm going to answer two questions before I, we lose track of it. We talked about sourcing locally. Probably a good time to mention that we are tracking lead certifications somewhere in the silver area. So, part of that strategy is beyond just the trees, but also other local materials. So, so we're definitely going to be looking at that as part of our strategies for both landscaping and other building materials, to get the credit for our lead certification as part of that. And then, talking about the basin at the north end of the site, so what that is, is it's really a desilting basin. So, as, as water comes across from the north side of Kuama Road, what the idea is here, and this is where we have to work really closely with our arborist, our civil engineer in terms of how we're managing that water. The concept we have there is that it'll be fairly shallow, but it will be worked into the, we'll say, the native slopes and the drainage, to the extent possible. We're trying to place it so that we avoid disruption of as many, of as many or of any trees as possible, so that it can, it can hold the water, and then eventually, that water will go out through a pipe system down to the regular drainage. So, periodically, the facility as part of their water management and best management practices on the site, will have to go up and clean out that, probably on a yearly basis, basis, as part of their maintenance plan, just to remove the silt. So, it is, basically, it's going to be a, it's a shallow basin, it's generally filled with rocks and other components, and it will hold the volume of water necessary to ease the percolation as it comes down the site.
So, the water's actually coming in from where?
It's actually coming in from across the street.
Right.
So, then, yeah, so the natural drainage comes down from the north, and then it goes under the street, and it actually daylights, so there's a pipe that's up there now. So, there is a little bit of a basin that's existing, but we're going to, we're going to modify that a little bit to handle the volume, based on the hydrology report, and then we're going to try to work that into the natural landscape to minimize the disruption of the oak trees.
True. That's great.
Maybe one note is that we've talked to our civil engineers, so as the grading plans come into the city for review, right now, I think it's illustrated in the planning documents as a, you know, sort of one basin. We may end up with actually three basins, so that we can minimize that disruption to the, to the oak trees, but yet maintain the volume that staff is looking for.
Okay, good. And then, I noticed on your section
If I can just add on that. If you refer to Attachment H, page 5, you can see the watershed area that we're having to deal with there. There's around 17 acres of watershed that's coming underneath Kuama that we've got to accommodate on the hospital site. And so, we looked at a number of options during the design stage of this, and we felt that the least intrusive was these simple onsite retention, detention basins initially, and then it goes into a main distribution area underneath the new parking lot, which comprises roughly a 36-inch pipe that will percolate into the existing ground underneath that. And I can't remember the length, it hasn't been totally designed, but is close to 50 feet, could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less. And so, a lot of thought on, on staff's side and the engineer's side, and a lot of discussion on this. And in the, of course, the final plan has not been designed yet, and it's clearly to take advantage of the natural terrain and the maintenance as many trees as we possibly can.
Good. The other question I had was, in your section, it showed plant material, but nothing was called out. So, is it vegetate, or is that too early to
If we do end up with some vegetation within the detention or desilting basin itself, it would have to be one that can handle high water content, or at least an occasional heavy water content.
Okay, good. And then, my last question had to do with the emergency access drive. And I'm understanding that it's for emergencies, so it'll be very, not used very often. And is my understanding that it's not going to be gated or locked or anything?
Yeah, that's correct. Part of the, part of the thought behind that is that if there is an emergent situation, part of that is about managing either from the staff level or something else, in terms of the ability to go up there, unlock it, or manage NOx boxes or other things to allow vehicles to come in. Currently, the way the, we've kind of envisioned it as that secondary access, because if something were to happen on the front, there's no other access to the site at all. So, we've sort of So, we've sort of looked at it more as a residential driveway, if you will, from our perspective, that allowed or afforded probably more so ambulances and fire trucks or other things that may need to come in there on occasion if there was some sort of emergency on the front side of the site, just to allow them that access and to be able to come down. I think right now, until we determine the sightlines along Kuyama Road with staff in terms of where that actual entry point is, is that it's only going to be right in, right out for the, as part of the conditions, and then pending the sightline analysis or the more detailed sightline analysis of where, of where that actual entry point is, then it could, working with staff, we can consider broadening that out. But right now, it's just right in, right out only.
So, my concern is, if the gate is open, you know, why not use it? So, and the reason I'm bringing that up is that it's a highly, first of all, it's a school route. The two, Matilla High Junior High and OVS happen to be just on the other side of the hospital area, you know, coming off Kuyama, and there's a lot of heavy vehicle traffic and also students that are walking and biking. So, you know, ideally, I'd like to not see that there, have the access drive, but I also understand your need for having this emergency route. So, I'm kind of leaning towards, you know, could it be gated or locked? And I, that's just a comment on my end. The other comment that I had was, I noticed, I think it's 25 feet wide, and I'm just wondering, does it need to be that wide, or could it be slightly modified so that you don't lose as many oaks on that side of the driveway? Yeah, so
Yeah, we can definitely look at the size of that. I think the one thing we want to make sure can accommodate, we would work with Ventura County Fire Department, we want to make sure that it can accommodate the fire trucks that are going to be coming down, or potentially coming down. Because what they're also going to use that road for, it just needs to be wide enough, is that they need 150-foot access on both sides of the, on both sides of the building. So, they'll, they'll park there, they'll have 150 feet. We just need to make sure it's wide enough for, for them to be on it.
We also looked at, as we go and look at how the routing works, that maybe we can do the Ojai thing and split the highway and go around things, and that would be, that would be sort of cool.
Yeah. Another comment was that I know you can use a permeable surface that's going to be emergency vehicle rated. Depends on the degree of slope, and it gets really steep at the top, obviously, you are most likely wouldn't be able to use it then, but on the other areas, just to help minimize the impact on the roots of the oaks, I would encourage some sort of a permeable, of course, emergency vehicle rated surface. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Nolan, wonderful comments. Commissioner Jagiello?
Yes, my questions are construction-related, as far as schedule is concerned. Can you talk a little bit about the funding of the project and in lieu of the phasing? And is the project completely funded at this time? And are the phasings going to go interrupted? I see also that you're going to be providing a performance bond for the guarantee of the second phase. Can you just talk about that process? And give us a vision of the schedule, the overall?
Certainly, I'll start with the vision of the, of the schedule. What we're working out with OSHPOD right now is to actually get approval for the building of the whole 75-bed facility. So, even though we've called it Phase 1A and 1B, it's really more of a permitting and logistics exercise with the state in terms of how we're managing that, that scope of work. The, the reason for the, I think the reason, and maybe staff might want to add in on this as well, but the reason for the bond, as it relates to, relates to that, is since the city is really only looking at irrigation, landscape, and grading, they just wanted assurance that the, the construction costs related to tearing down the old building and putting in the code-required parking, that is, that makes us compliant on those two parcels actually happen. So, that's the reason and the rationale for the bonding, is since that we want it, in order to make this work, we have to move the patients out of the one facility into the new facility, and we can't tear it down until then. So, because of some of those jurisdictional challenges, the bonding of that particular portion of the work, that was the strategy we came up with to give the city reassurance that the full scope would be implemented, because otherwise, we wouldn't be in compliance if we didn't. Regarding schedule, it's going to be a couple of different things. We, we have submitted the full set of plans with the exception of the 15-bed expansion to the state. So, we are in our second back check with them. In fact, we were down meeting with them this morning regarding the 15-bed and how we're going to work through those logistics. So, we're already, if I was to use a number, I'd say 80 to 85% through that process with the state, and we're going to be scheduling meetings within the next couple of weeks to go back to finalize those initial comments. Of course, they won't issue a supermit, so in terms of the, the way the logistics works is, we have to have planning approval first, so from, from the commission and from the city, we need to demonstrate that we've went through and had, done our environmental compliance and had planning approval. And second to that is, is the first thing that starts is, the grading package will be submitted to the city of Ojai for permitting, review and permitting. So, that's the first stage, so that's the first part of the schedule. And once that grading is permitted, then we'll start. So, it's really going to be a matter of how long a review, submitted review and permitting process for the grading is going to take at that point in time.
Yeah, assuming that all that takes place, how's your funding?
The, the project is not yet fully funded. Our board knows about the magnitude of the cost. We don't know what the full cost is until it gets through the Planning Commission and OSHPOD, so our board has not finally approved it. We believe that the, if it is within a rough order of magnitude as projected, our board will approve it. This will be a cash-paid project, but we do not have full funding or approval by our board trustees.
Are you finished?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. Commissioner Lajowski, did you have something?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, I don't have any speakers cards, so, but does anybody like to speak in the audience? Yes, sir.
Come to the mic, sir.
My question is, everything going the way you would like it? What's the timeframe of this whole project? What would you guess the timeframe would be? One year, 18 months, what?
That was my question as well.
Okay, that's it for me.
Once, once we have a board approval, the contractor estimates the construction time to take about 16 months, 16 to 18 months.
And that, that includes the demo?
That's phase, that's all.
That's, that's all of it. I know there's, there's discussion of phasing and bonding, but I think that from a contract perspective, it's one contract with the contractor for the entire project. The only purpose of the phasing, I think Joey hit on that point, is because we have to build the new building, license the new building, we can't demo that building until the patients go into the new building. And so, that's, that's the, the only component there that, it's a timing issue.
Well, that's what I was getting at, so there's no delay between all the phases.
No, the, the current discussions of the contractor is, it's one, it's one project. It's a one, it's a 75-bed building to be built, construction, licensed, moved into that, and then the demolition and the parking lot of the, the existing skilled nursing facility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lajowski?
Just out of curiosity, I, I wonder, just, I wonder how you got to the point where, like where all the delay broke down? Like, as far as, when you're working with the contractor and the architect, I'm sure there were certain milestones that you had a review by the contractor, the, you know, opinion of probable costs. At what point was, what point did you take the giant leap that it was going to be way more money than you expected? And how did, how did that happen, I guess, I'm wondering?
I'd say it started back in July of last year. So, we had been tracking, working with either our internal estimators or our contractor working towards that budget. And then we did actually send it out on the street to get a bid. And so, when the bids came back, they were about 20% higher, which is the delta that Hadi mentioned in his opening comments. And so, from there, that's when we started looking at, you know, other, other alternatives. You know, could we, you know, is it overdesigned? Are there duplicate materials? I mean, what are the issues that were driving those costs? We sat down with the contractor and looked at it, you know, sort of by trade and by category to see where things were higher than our initial estimates. And so, that was part of, you know, part of that analysis. So, from the end of July through, through the, towards early fall, that's when we were looking at, are there value engineering opportunities? And we were able to reduce it, but without cutting scope or cutting beds, we couldn't get it down to the original projection. So, that's when we took a step back, worked with the hospital's leadership, and looked at, you know, what else, what else could we do? And what is, what is the status of the project at that time? I don't know if that answers your question, but
Yeah, as well as, I mean, I'm just curious, I mean, we see a lot of construction projects. I'm involved in construction projects, and at a certain point, this always happens. So, I'm just curious at other organizations' experience and, you know, how they deal with it, because it's a difficult pill to swallow.
And so, we're using, and to that point, so then we're using those numbers from, you know, the bid that was a little higher than our expectations. So, when we're looking at the planning of the, the additional 15 beds, we're using those escalated numbers as part of that analysis, so.
Yeah, I think also, well-intended, we had the architect, working with the contractor, looked at a square foot basis and gave what they thought was an honest projected. When it was discovered that the, that OSHPOD, the state agency, was going to require a higher level of building, a hospital-grade building, the price per square footage went up significantly. That's the main reason. And then all the other things happened, but that is, that's the main reason for this project, why that happened, okay?
So, I'm assuming that you're, or you're stating that once the project is permitted and gets underway, funding should then be available to complete the project without any delays?
Yeah, I can't speak for the board of trustees, that's why, that's the only hesitation I have. They, we have been keeping them well apprised of the cost, the cost escalation. We started this several years ago with the intent of remodeling or retrofitting the existing building. That was going to be $8.4 million, and that's what we put in our long-term capital projections. But looking at that, we'd end up with a old building that would be seismically sound, but it wasn't going to give the community very much more. So, the architect, starting with Scott, suggested that we look at a replacement facility. And that's where we started, that was, the price for that was going to be about the same amount of money, $9.2 million for replacement, and that price went up significantly, and that just gave us pause, as any organization. And we looked at replacing the facility with a 60-bed facility, and that didn't make any economic sense. As Hadi already indicated, you'd add, add cost, but not additional revenue. So, just in the last few months, working with the architects, we've had the idea, a 75-bed facility made more financial sense. Now, we are short, or in other words, we have a question mark. Our health system, we, we have about $143 million in the bank. We could pay cash for this, but we have other construction needs within our health system. But our board is looking at this. There are, just the last week, two other potential sources of capital. One, it would be kind of a joint venture with a company that does skilled nursing facilities that's not fully vetted yet. And then another source, and finally, a third source might be a commitment by our communities, that is, Western Ventura County, Ventura, Ojai, to increase our capital campaign by $5 million over about a $7 million, seven-year period. All of those things are reasonable, sound, they make sense to our board, but until we get a final price in a bid, our board can't commit. It's like asking, get a, get a blank check. As a not-for-profit organization, we have the fiduciary responsibility to make sure that all the i's are dotted with respect to the financials. So, we would not be here tonight wasting your time and our time if we didn't think that this was a, a go, but we don't have final board approval for that yet, okay? And so, it is our anticipation that, yes, the board will want to do that. We're committed to this. We have other capital project in Ventura and so forth, and throughout Western Ventura County. We have to balance all of that, but our intent is to move forward this project, but we do not have final board approval, okay?
Commissioner Lajowski?
I have just a few more nuts and bolts questions. I remember last March, when you came in here, you were really excited about the LEED certification and all the green aspects involved in it, and, you know, there was some discussion, and this kind of, I guess, relates back to one of the variances you're asking for. So, there's a 50% open space requirement. You're at, correct me if I'm wrong, 43%, right? I guess some of that open space requirement is being compromised in the spirit of parking spaces, particularly on the, was that the south side? No, the west side? I'm not sure.
I think it's the, the existing stalls on the, if you look at the upper right-hand corner, so that'd be the south, southeast corner.
I am, I'm wondering if you would be open to the concept of, I mean, I know this doesn't quite make mathematical sense across the board, but there's a 7% deficiency in the open space requirement. Would you be willing to dedicate 7% of the parking spaces to carpool, electric vehicle, that type of, as was point yet, to offset the, that deficiency in the open space? I don't, would that be something you'd be willing to consider as a condition of approval?
I think that's, I'd first say yes, to the, to the extent that I think that's also part of the condition when we look at, you know, other mitigation strategies to, for parking mitigation, so whether that be ride-share programs, you know, clean vehicle parking spaces, other things. I mean, I don't, I don't see an issue with that. I think my, my hesitation, if you hear it, is really more about making sure that, you know, costs, we need to balance, make sure we balance that with the, with the budget. And then secondly, making sure that we also make sure we maintain our, the code compliance as we work those into the strategy, and I just don't know what the 7% number is. So, so, so the strategy, I think, is, is definitely something we can look at, what exactly that percentage comes out to be and how that balances with the whole thing.
Okay, one other thing, oh, yes, Steve, please.
Chime in on that. The, the onsite improvements are going to be under local building department purview, and one of the elements that is in the conditions of approval is they've got to meet the California Green Building Code requirements. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but just off of my memory, based on this number of parking spaces, they're going to have close to that number of parking spaces with, you know, charging facilities and the high-efficiency vehicle spaces and all of those elements a part of those requirements. So, I think we're going to get close to that in, actually, a code requirement.
Going back to that March meeting, one of the things we discussed was the Living Building Challenge, and they have a requirement for a certain percentage of your landscaped area to be edible, you know, and we kind of talked about that a little bit as far as having some type of herb garden or, or whatever that could be incorporated in there. I would be, I would like to see more edible, a certain percentage of your landscaped area be edible. I don't know if you know offhand what that would be, but
Yeah, I, I think, I think these are all great concepts. I think they're all concepts that we're, we're interested in exploring. I think logistically, in a healthcare setting, when you have a prescribed diet for all of your, your, your patients, it, it becomes very bureaucratic. And I'm not trying to be negative or cold-blanket from, from, from that perspective, but we, you know, we've explored growing fruit and, and serving it, and there's, from the California Department of Public Health, there's so many regulations that go through that in terms of chain and command and custody and so forth of, of how the, the fruit's grown and so forth, that doesn't allow us just to do something like that. that for our patients. That being said, we've, from an exploratory perspective, have explored having kind of a herb garden, you know, both to, to promote the, the gardening component for, for the residents that may be interested in doing something like that. But we have to be very careful with, with the varying state agencies before we can, we can kind of go, jump in two feet first with, with the edible environment.
I agree with Hadi. I think it's a great idea. If you walk around our campus right now, you'll see all kinds of citrus fruit and everything else. We're into this, okay? And if you came to our houses and so forth, all three of our houses, we have trees. I've planted 200 trees in the last five years. We're into this. But we do, we cannot feed patients necessarily, but we'll explore this. And maybe even a garden for our residents would be a great idea. We love the idea, but we have some restrictions by the California Department of Public Health that we need to understand better.
Better stated, thank you.
So, but if you walk around a campus, you, you did, you'll see this, you know, a tango and a lime tree and so forth. We're into that. We, we love that idea. We'll explore that and, but we have some restrictions.
Thank you.
Just along those lines, it was interesting because when I went through your plant palette, I saw one culinary herb and it was sage. And I thought, okay, well, they're growing one thing. Hmm, are they going to be doing something with that? So just kind of tagging on with Commissioner Luchowski there. But, you know, even if you couldn't do something, you might want to have an interactive garden. There's, for horticulture, it's so healing, you know. I'm sure you're aware of that, the whole program. But I had one other question and it had to do with drainage. And I understand you, we've got the basin or basins that are going to be up in the oak area towards Kuyama up on the slope. And then in the parking lot, there's the underground storage. But, and this kind of gets along the lines of sustainability too, and maybe even an offset with that open space area. And that would be to capture some of the stormwater in your parking lot area and bioswells between the parking spaces. It's depending on the, your soil type and what have you, but that's also not overly expensive and possibly doable. Something to consider.
No, I, I think definitely, and, and we just want to watch out with the trees.
Exactly. It depends on the tree species and where you plant them. And of course, you don't want a lot of them sitting in water. Yeah, so it has to be done correctly.
And maybe some clarifications if it helps. So on the upper side of the site, the north side, that's really intended for desilting. So when the water does come in, it's intended to flow out. So at some point, it'll flow on the site naturally and then ultimately into the underground pipes. And then when it does get to the south end of the site into, it's really a percolation system. So what it's intended to do is, in lieu of holding it either in the parking lots or having some really extreme grades, we used to do that, but then it'd fill up with water in the rain and then everybody'd have to walk through the water. So it's really an underground system. It's, it's quite large. I think the pipes in there are about three feet in diameter. So what it's intended to do, and they have holes in them and then a sediment basin, so ultimately it holds all that water. And then the idea is to get as much of that to percolate out into the site as possible.
If I may, what, how does the water inlet into those pipes? What is it, is it surface or is it piped in, underground or?
Both, actually. Up on the north end of the site, it's more surface. And then eventually, there is, there is a drainage system that starts to capture it, I'd say on the, just on the retaining walls along the north end of the building. And so from there, it goes into actually catch basins and then it's filtered and then it goes into the bigger filter down at the south end of the site.
So it, from looking at the plan, it's, it's pretty obvious that a, a good portion of that six or so acres is now being covered with impermeable surfaces, parking, whatever. And, you know, I, I think a priority has to be the recharging of the aquifers, you know, that we have, how best we can. And so I'm kind, I, I know that Steve is working on this in terms of, I, I guess I'm interested in the criteria and how, how do we determine the size of the, of these catch basins, these detention water basins? Is that something that you're going to work out mathematically or?
Clearly it's a mathematical calculation. And the final design has not been submitted to us yet. And so we are very sensitive to trying to, you know, maintain the existing character of the land and not be as obtrusive as we possibly can. But the, the issue that came forward during our review is that there's an underground culvert that runs under Kuyama that actually there's 17 acres of, of land that drain to the hospital site, that we have to accommodate that water.
Is that what's entering at the northeast corner? Where the silt is coming in and all that?
Right, and so...
It's becoming a drainage, literally.
Clearly it's acting today as, as, as a natural drainage system that just kind of filters down into that area. So part of the design is to work through that. And so we'll be, going to be working closely with the drainage engineer. We've had some original concerns about the, the original concept, that it may affect the structure of the existing hospital. We actually required additional soils analysis to make sure that that wouldn't be the case. You can see that there's drainage systems on the east and the west side. Those are temporary systems during the course of construction that need to be installed until the permanent one is installed. So there's been a lot of thought and effort on their side as well as our side. And, and we clearly understand that we're not through with this and we're going to have to continue to work with the applicant to make sure that the system is done properly and, and as efficiently as we can.
Well, thanks for that because it's a, obviously a priority to, to deal with that situation, so it sounds like we're in good hands here. I would just like to touch on, while I have the mic in front of me, on just a couple items. And one of them is this secondary driveway access. And if I go to, on the conditions, number 78, that's attachment A, 2025, 2025. It, it says, "The proposed emergency secondary driveway location shall be relocated approximately 90 feet to the east of Kuyama." Now currently, it's drawn and, well, you can see an overlay, it's stretching out there a little bit from, evidently there's two options that are somehow graphically displayed up there. You want to get into that a little bit? And I'd like to know how that's going to be resolved. And obviously, there's issues up there with sightlines and this is a big deal. So if you would.
So as part of the discussions that we had with staff and our traffic engineers, the lower entry is where we originally proposed that. Based on a preliminary, preliminary sightline analysis, our engineer has recommended to move that 10 feet to the east. And then making sure that certain trees and foliage and other things are cut back or scaled back to make it a fully functioning driveway beyond the right-in and right-out requirement. As staff has went out and looked at the site, they've come back thinking maybe 80 feet is, is more appropriate, but that takes a further, our engineer was concerned that that actually starts to make the other direction of traffic more challenging. And so what we have to do is do a more detailed study with our sightlines. And so what we're going to, so what we'd agreed to with staff during the process is that, you know, for now, we would illustrate both. And the real answer is it's going to be somewhere in between there when we, when we get the driveway done, but it's going to be in the best place that maximizes the safety as we go forward. So we have to complete that with staff's analysis and with our traffic engineers, really to try to get those two blended together.
So upon approval of the DR, you would pick up on those studies or, and then bring it back to staff for a review?
They would ultimately be, at least our preferred location with that analysis would be included in our grading submittal to the city. So we would have analyzed that from our perspective, placed the driveway where we believe it's the safest based on the analysis. And then we'd spent that analysis and the grading plans to the city for review. And then we'd have that dialogue about the exact location based on our traffic engineer's analysis.
Because of the critical nature of that drive and what we're talking about here, I kind of feel that as planning commissioners, we should be able to take a look at that. And I don't know how to, that's maybe something that...
I've got a question maybe for Steve here, as far as the jurisdiction of that road itself. It's in the city of Ohio, I assume, because Ventura County is just on the other side of that road? Is that true?
That's correct.
And so it's right down the middle? How does that work? Just let's speak to that.
It's under our jurisdiction because we're, we're exiting out onto essentially this street.
So we can control the signage and the speed on that road if we, if we choose to? As a city?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
If, if, if I may weigh in on this, this, this was a point of significant discussion and numerous meetings with our development engineer, Jay Patel, myself, and their traffic engineers on this. And not only are we looking at pure traffic and site distance and site clearance, we're actually looking as well as where this fits into the natural terrain. So we limit the grading and the intrusion on the, the site up there to hopefully, you know, protect additional trees in this overall design. The original design was probably going to take a significant cut, possibly a retaining wall, two-to-one back slope on this to get the driveway in.
The line on the westerly property line.
Yes. And in our initial discussions is, let's look at moving this. There again, in talking to the traffic engineers, we can't move it too far because of the terrain of the road and the site clearance. So we clearly would have liked to have had a, a final recommendation to the planning commission on that. But our recommendation to you is to let your professional staff make that final determination within the parameters that we've given you to, we can secure not only the, the best site clearance that we possibly can with the constraints that we have, to deal with the natural terrain the best we can and the preservation of trees and deal with the drainage issues the best we can. And we need to look at all of those.
Safety, of course.
Of course.
That's my primary concern. I think that's the primary concern.
And that's what I'm referring to as site clearance, is trying to get the best safe route. And we need to work with not only the traffic, the traffic engineers, but their drainage, drainage engineers to develop the best site. So this, this is a little complicated, but we feel that we can work with the, the hospital engineers and staff to locate the best location. And I wish I could have given you a final location and analysis, but they're still actually evaluating and working on that. And in our backup position on this was, is because of the safety aspect in your conditions of approval, we're recommending right-in, right-out. Because we have a concern of left traffic in and left traffic out because of the site constraints there without having to make some modifications to the road system to accommodate that. So after our review of that, we're recommending right-in, right-out, and the hospitals agreed to that.
I have a question for Steve. In that regards, for construction purposes, I think this is going to be a great access. Because I can't imagine all those vehicles coming through the hospital, concrete trucks and all that stuff right off of Olliet Avenue, no, 33. During construction, you can see a lot of vehicles during the same peak hours of the school where people are going 50 miles an hour to school, getting their kids there on time, and construction workers showing up at the, at the project. Should we implement some kind of, I'm sure you're going to, most likely, during construction, some kind of signage that is temporary, that slows the traffic way down there, blinking, blinking lights, yield signs, construction slowed down?
I'm, I'm wondering if we, we need to first clarify that whether or not this is meant to ever be used for construction vehicles.
Thank you, Chair Zabir. That was going to be my point to jump in here. As presently worded, condition number 80 prohibits use of the secondary access off Kuyama for construction. It is only a secondary emergency access. It does not allow for construction. So that will not be a concern.
Okay. I thought it would be a perfect road for construction access.
What is going to be the construction access?
It will be off Maricopa in front, yes.
Yeah, it's a long driveway. Well, I feel confident with, you know, what I'm hearing from staff, that the due diligence is happening and that's what I needed to hear, that you guys are on it, so.
So let me just clarify this a little bit because I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that this is a hospital's choice to come in and propose as, as emergency secondary access. We had many conversations with them regarding, you know, the access that those two back parcels take off, because that's, Kuyama really is their frontage. And if you notice in your conditions of approval tonight, we have tied the front parcel to the back two parcels. There's a condition in here, what is it, Matt? Eighty?
The one that ties two together?
It's number 102.
102. "In the event of a future sale of these two parcels separately from each other, the owners of these parcels shall have duly executed and recorded a reciprocal access easement and covenant agreement subject to the city, to the approval of the city attorney, requiring both parcels to have reciprocal access, drainage and utility access, parking easements, and requiring the primary site access from both parcels to be from Maricopa Road, with both parcels retaining only a secondary access off of Kuyama Road. If a reciprocal access easement and covenant agreement is not executed and recorded, then the owner of the project parcel fronting Kuyama Road must apply for and receive approval from the planning commission for a primary site access from Kuyama Road and any other improvements necessary for those two parcels to be held in separate ownership. Additionally, if at the time of the sale of either parcel, independent from the other parcel, a reciprocal access easement and covenant agreement has not been executed and recorded, then each parcel shall comply with the zoning regulations then in effect with regard to parking and access, independent of the other parcel." This is very clear that the intent is to not allow these two parcels in the back to have full access onto Kuyama because of all these issues that you're all bringing up that haven't been addressed. And so they agree with, that we've, the applicant in this particular case, the, the hospital's had these conditions of approval for, for a couple of weeks. They, they've not asked for any modifications to any of those. And it's very clear that this has truly been proposed as emergency secondary access. It's been conditioned that way. And there, and it's been locked down that if subsequent to these, you know, to this whole design review, somebody purchases those back parcels, for whatever reason this might occur, they are going to be obligated to come through, design review, and deal with all the traffic implications from, from the ongoing traffic going on to Kuyama Road. So that's, they're pretty much not locked down on this.
I was going to say, in addition, attachment A, page 20, item 80, it says, "If in the future the applicant," meaning ceased to use Kuyama Road for primary access or ongoing secondary access to and from the facility, the applicant shall submit modification to this permit and include a traffic study analysis for review as part of that modification." I'm, I'm glad that's there.
I saw a hand in the audience.
Thank you. My name is Ben Turner. I'm not affiliated with the project. I don't want him here as a resident. I wanted to bring up the point that California has a tremendously high standard for building projects. This group has to go through OSHPAD and they're going to go for the LEED standard. There's going to be executive orders to follow in the building code and stormwater pollution control and prevention plans and detention. It's a tremendous undertaking to even change these plans and to go above the code, whether it be by the adoption of extra conditions that might include changes to the garden, the plantings, trees, permeable paving, whatever it may be. I just wanted to, to bring up the fact that as you are advocates for the residents here, that also the nonprofit are serving the community too. So every dollar that is spent going above code, even though you are acting on our behalf to make a beautiful campus, is a dollar that may not be available for their core function, which is still to provide healthcare for sick people in Ojai. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, to keep mindful of that fact when additions are going to be made to the project. They're going to burden the project further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anybody else, please?
Marion Nchau Stigie, I'm the president of the Board of Hitching Post. Let me start by saying we're totally in support of the project and... Let me start by saying we're totally in support of the project, and Mr. Ashkari has been nothing but a good neighbor and a great communicator with us. But I wanted to bring up to you, as a president, and I've got people speaking to me, so I'm passing along the concerns. The biggest concern is that that, just what you were saying, that secondary road being, you know, we know, we've been assured that it's an emergency only, and we'd lay down there our bodies, just in case. But the other issues are a little bit more mundane. The drainage, we're on the west side and we're lower, and the drainage would be a significant issue to us. And in view of the fact that we have been some financial changes, and we're well aware of how that has to affect some of the conditions and the building restrictions, I'd like to bring up the point that we had been, I don't want to say promised, it sounds too strong, but it had been suggested that a wall would be created between, on the west side of the camp, their campus, between ours, because we're within 10 feet of that road. And, you know, they're private residences, obviously, and it's a great concern that what would transpire there, and if we could, we're also thinking of rodents, gophers, all those things, as they start digging, migrating happily over to our area. Not that the wall's going to stop it, but nonetheless, those are just a couple of points that are of concern to the residents, the neighbors. And as I said, we totally support it, and so far we've had great cooperation, but those are points that I would like you guys to filter through your screening process. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Nope. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then, and let's discuss. First, I want to compliment everyone, staff, the applicants, amazing effort. I know there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears on the stack of papers, so, but you've obviously come incredibly well-prepared, and that makes it much easier for us to deliberate. So I'm thinking that we need to look at this, first the lot line adjust, you know, look at it in parts, because we can't go beyond, if we don't, if we don't get the lot line adjustment and the variance done. So I don't know if you all want to break it down that way and discuss it that way and see if we can get beyond the lot line adjustment and the variance, and then go from there?
Sure.
Okay. So let's talk about the lot line adjustment. John?
The merger?
Merger.
Oh, I'm sorry. First of all, I don't have a problem with that at all, I just see it as being something that we need to do and to get the project rolling forward, so to me, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I just see it as a comprehensive kind of thing. They all go together, so I think we have to approve the whole thing, or?
I think we have to do, I think we have to do the, if they can't get, maybe Mr. Summers can speak to this.
I'm happy to speak to this. The project was probably best be considered as a whole, because without any one of the permits, it dies, so I wouldn't recommend voting permit by permit. Certainly, in your discussions, you can focus on one or other that presents a concern to you. But I would recommend considering a motion and a vote on it as a whole.
Definitely. I just meant, it seems like.
For discussion.
Just for discussion purposes, if we can't get past this, we're not, we're hitting a roll block. Okay. For discussion purposes.
Lots.
There's a lot of moving parts, so. Commissioner Lachowski?
I concur with both Merk and Foster.
Yeah, I'm agreement on the lot line adjustment, and that, yes, this needs to be looked at comprehensively. I'm not sure how that's going to be done yet, but I agree to that.
Yeah, the light light adjustment is just a no-brainer.
Okay. So just for discussion purposes, shall we move on to the variance then? Okay, let's talk about the variance.
I don't have any problem with the variance, because I think staff's done a really good job of providing us with the conditions where you can see that, the existing hospital property, for instance, already is out of compliance with that, so I think it's, it's not a problem to allow this project to see the same way.
I agree. I think if you look at the size of the property, 7% difference is negligible, and there's enough buffer happening, and that's why it's there, I believe, so.
Excuse me, I'm in agreement on that also.
Yeah, especially if you consider recreational use versus industrial use, I think it is, or it's, again, I'm in support of it.
Well, and it seems like we get to preserve the north end of the property by doing that, rather than squishing it out that way, so that is just a treasure to be able to retain that woodland forest on the north side.
Yes.
All righty. All right. Let's see. Well, now, I mean, I think now we can sort of just look at the rest as a whole, the design review permit, the tree permit, so everybody can just riff as they wish. I've got notes from the discussion we've had so far, so I guess we'll have to clarify what, if anything, you know, what's the suggestion and what's the condition, if anything, and go from there.
Chair.
Commissioner Lachowski?
I'd like to propose a couple of conditions, or propose the possibility of a couple of conditions. Page 20, on attachment A, number 77, I'd like a condition that shall provide documentation of implementation of a traffic management program, which shall include at least two of the following. I'd like to, I'd like to keep that more defined, rather than maybe.
And voluntary.
Yeah.
Okay, so lose voluntary and change to shall.
And at least two of the following. So basically, they have to provide a traffic management program, then they have a number, then they have one, two, three, four, five different options they can choose, you know, there's five options. At least two of them must be included in the traffic management. I'd also like to ask, well, let's maybe talk about that, and then I can move on to other stuff. What are the rest, do you feel about that?
I actually had the same, or I knew that they needed to be addressed, it feels like that when you get into a voluntary situation there, my question was, well, how, and Kathleen mentioned that they would be dealing with approvals of whatever came forth, but there's got to be approvals, there's got to be verifications of some sort, you just can't leave it dangling there as voluntary. So I think this makes it more specific and is a good path to follow.
I have a question. From staff's perspective, what, what, you know, what, what's the, what am I trying to ask? What constitutes a traffic management program? If it's voluntary on the one hand, then what's the standard?
So the word voluntary came from their traffic engineer as they were talking, in terms of, they're meeting the, they are meeting the required parking number. But overall, there is a potential, because the hospital in front is legal non-conforming, there is a possibility that they will have more demand for parking than they actually can accommodate. This is a case of actual use being their potential, okay, versus the actual numbers in the Ojai municipal code. So their offset to that was to provide this traffic slash parking management plan is really what it is, and offer these things, so they encourage people to not bring their own car, every single person not to drive their own car. That was the whole point of this. So you're going to give subsidized or discount transit passes, so that gets people out of their car into mass transit. Implementation of a parking cash-out option to allow employees to pocket a portion of saved parking costs if they switch to other modes of travel. Promotion of ride sharing and prioritizing accessibility of parking stalls for ride-sharing vehicles. Provide opportunities to rent bicycles and provide safe bicycle storage facilities, and to stagger employee start and end times in effort to decrease employee parking demand at any given time. That's the goals of this program, so that's what it's supposed to do. So any of those changes that you're saying, too, you could ask them to do all of those things. We just, when we were working together as staff and the applicant, we were trying to give him a free, a little bit of flexibility, because obviously they know their employees a little bit better than we do. But this came from their document, it was provided by the applicant, so we're fine with any changes, and I hope I answered your question, but that's the goal of this.
Okay, well, so presumably then the applicant has an understanding of the costs of the various suggestions here?
Yeah, can I speak on that? I think we understand.
Well, I'll open the public hearing in order for you to do that.
Thank you. I think as we discussed it, we understood that the parking to be increasing as we go through that process, and so really, part of it for us was really understanding the need. Obviously, as we go through this process, as we've done on our other campus, if there's an issue with parking, we, you know, we've come up with voluntary programs before where we go through and encourage our staff to either carpool or use alternative modes of transportation, or even have off-site parking if needed to be able to do that. And so those are things that we've actually already explored, even as we go into the construction phase, if we anticipate any impacts with the parking as we go through that.
Is the term voluntary, then, now, Mike, is the term voluntary meant to be, the hospital is, the implementation of the program is voluntary to their workers?
I think that the term voluntary meant, that this isn't, it's a, I think maybe it needs to be deleted in this case, it was meant to be in their traffic parking analysis that was submitted, to say, this is going above and beyond, they don't, it's not a code requirement, it's something above and beyond to help offset the demand, so in a sense, that was what makes it voluntary. It's not, they're meeting the letter of the law with the parking, as they're saying. But there may be peaks, peak periods, et cetera, et cetera, and as I said previously, these issues, these issues are all things that are in compliance with the city's policies for complete streets, trying to get people to use different modes of, in a indirect way. You know, this isn't like providing infrastructure that handles different modes of transportation, this is just getting people to use different transportation. So we're all in support of this, we can remove the word voluntary to clarify, to make sure, and I think it's just fine to change the wording to give him some flexibility, but really tell him he needs to do two. That's, I don't think there's any issue with that.
And I think, can I, can I just make one comment? We had defined voluntary as if needed, recognizing that it may not be needed, and so, but if needed, that we would have to take measures in order to ensure that the parking needs are met.
If I may, what got me even thinking about that that's a good idea, those suggestions, was in reading the report, it states that the analysis concluded that the overall complex will be deficient in parking, which is attributed to the legal non-conforming status of the hospital's parking, but the parking will be sufficient to meet the anticipated demand based on industry standards provided by ITE parking generation rates. So there's a caveat there that says, okay, you're not meeting the demand or the requirements we're lacking, but it looks like there's a possibility that it could still work, so hence we have these bullet points, suggestions for voluntary measures. So we're on a slippery slope ordinance-wise with this thing, and it's just, you know, how do we shape that, you know?
By taking the word voluntary out, that does it, pretty much, because it then reads that they include these five items, it doesn't even limit them to two.
Well, I'd hate to box them into a corner as far as having, I mean, I don't, I think, you know, to let them still have some discretion as far as which ones to pick, or we could do three, I don't know, I just think that the intent, where, I guess where I'm coming from this is exactly as Commissioner Foster pointed out, their own consultant said they're probably going to be deficient. I think we need to find a way to enforce the, or find some meat on this to ensure it. I don't think we need to go all the way, but if the rest of the commissioners feel that way, I mean, I'm open to talking about it more.
I'll just add another thought for you to consider, is that, you know, one of the things that's not in here that they, that I think they do do, is they do have leases for off-site parking facilities. You know, they're very proactive in handling the parking demand on site, because they're very aware of who's coming there, and who should, you know, employees should take, you know, a backseat to those people that are coming and using the facilities, because of the type of facility it is. And that's the reason that we sort of wrote it the way we did with their, we talked about this, it was something we had dialogue about, was just trying to allow the hospital to have flexibility in how they manage that, but with the idea of giving them these suggestions, which also encourage not only you to continue to use your parking and have off-site parking, but also do other modes or other issues.
Yeah, with that said, if you just, if you just took the word voluntary out of it, it gives them all the options to do it. And it's going to be in their self-enlightened interest to implement these, to manage their employees and manage their parking. And again, how are we going to?
Then you have to may it too, and then have to police that.
Commissioner Merk?
Well, I just think there's also a grammatical correction that can be made there, where I think what it intends to say is, the traffic management program may include, but not be limited to, the following, you know, right now it sounds like you can only do these five things, but really, they could do anything, as long as it solves the problem, is what I'm thinking. But I think your point is a good one, if we take out the word voluntary, then they have a traffic management program, and, yeah.
A further point to add on this one, mostly for the record, but also to assuage some of the applicant's concerns perhaps. Independent of the parking analysis, OJ's municipal code requires that the planning commission in approving a design review permit, consider complete streets principles. Specifically, OJ Municipal Code, section 10-2-2006 subdivision B, requires complete streets principles to be considered, and in fact requires that they be built into approvals. So that provides an independent basis to convert this condition from voluntary to required, independent of the fact that they meet the parking requirements for the back two parcels, but do not, are not expected to meet the parking overall, given the existing non-conforming nature of the hospital itself, which is not part of tonight's approval.
But I'm hearing from the applicant that it's still a question as to whether or not they will need to do that, because it's going to be triggered by need.
The, as I hear the applicant, their assessment of it is that they would like to have the option to do this or not do this, depending on how their parking comes out. I'm hearing from at least two commissioners that they would like to remove that option, and my analysis is that the city has the power, independent of the parking analysis, to impose this, if the commission so desires.
Okay.
I guess I understand the conversation. We can do the management plan, we can put it in place, but if there is not a need and nobody signs up for it, nobody's going to do it.
And that does speak to one of the realities of it, that they can, we can require them to offer subsidized transit passes, we can't require their employees to use them.
They can, you can build it, but they may not come.
It's voluntary to follow any law, or not.
Were you complete with your thoughts? Okay.
Should I go ahead and try to tackle the trees, or?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Did you have a question, Mr. Summers?
It occurred to me that I'm not entirely sure where the commission settled on this thing, but that could be dealt with at the later point.
Good point, yeah, we might as well clarify that right now. Okay, so it sounds to me like, tell me if you, go ahead, Mac.
I would like to remove the word voluntary, and they shall provide documentation of a traffic management program.
With the change that John brought about, and which include, but may not be limited to.
Okay, and we're not going to specify a requirement for any two, we're just going to let the rest of it go. to let the rest of it go. Okay. Okay, Commissioner Nolan wants to attack the trees.
Yeah. I, I think we should discuss this too, but I'm going to make a proposal and then let's talk about it. So this would be attachment A, page 13 of 25 is the tree preservation conditions. And generally, most of it, I'm, I'm in agreement with it. All the tree protection is, is standard. But well, I'm looking at number 29. And I, first I want a little clarification. The opening sentence says, "A final tree removal count shall be provided to the city based on the final location of the access drives, the stormwater facilities, construction activities, et cetera. In no time shall the final tree removal count be greater than 53 or involve trees not identified as being removed." So the trees that are located up where the access drive will, exit on Kuyama, those trees I don't believe are identified as for being removed at this point. So I think if I'm reading this correctly, if in fact several trees need to be removed up there somewhere else on the site, they will have to balance it and not take a tree out to not exceed that 53?
There's never been a request from the applicant to have it flexible, have flexibility in that way in the way the trees are being removed. I mean, this is very clear-
I just read, yeah.
This is very clear that the tree report identifies 53 slated for removal. If they have to take out something that they haven't identified as being subject to removal, they'll have to come back before you, because there's just a limit to how much flexibility that we can have. On any site where you've requiring, where you're removing five or more trees, it needs to go to planning commission.
Right.
What we're trying to do here is offer them flexibility in this condition, but to still tell them, you know, this isn't, this isn't, you know, this is a public hearing. It's coming before the public and the, and the planning commission. There are some parameters, and that is you've requested 53. That's what we're going to grant you. That's what the condition says. No more than 53 and no more than, and not all of a sudden trees that you haven't identified for removal.
Right.
The applicant feels that they've been very conservative in this list of 53 trees. They've included everything that they could possibly impact with construction. So, and that's how, that's how they've presented it. So we don't see the need for them to have flexibility to take out more than 53.
Okay. Good. I'm good with that. I just wanted to be clear and make sure I understood that. Okay, that said, I'm just going to kind of go through this one, read this, this is number 29, attachment A. "Once the applicant has a final count on the trees removed from the project site, a final tree mitigation plan, including any fees required to be paid, must also be submitted at the same time. The value of trees slated to be removed via tree permit is $466,950. This figure may be reduced if the applicant reduces the number of trees removed. The final mitigation plan must indicate the value of newly planted trees offsetting those removed. Value of the tree preservation measures to be implemented over the next 10 years for the remaining protected trees, including but not limited to pruning. Monitoring identified in condition number 29 and number 59. And finally, any monies paid to the city tree, I think it means tree fund probably, oh, it's tree in lieu fund, excuse me, in the case that the value of the first two mitigations does not equal the foreign $66,950 value of the protected trees removed." And so I think what's up for me at this point for discussion is, you know, how do we feel as a committee that this maintenance portion fulfill the mitigation requirement? It's, we just, we just don't have any solid numbers right now, solid tree numbers, value. It's, it's a little, it's a little tough. Any comments from anyone?
I'll say I really appreciate the fact that they, the, the Arborist report is so detailed, that you've actually sought the permits for the trees you want to take instead of coming back and after the fact. And even though that's a really difficult number, 53, again, it, it's better to ask permission first. And that goes a long way toward, for me, inspiring confidence in them, that they're going to do the right thing. So, you know, I, I, I'm not sure what the mechanism is to detail what this plan looks like over the next 10 years and whatnot. If there's something that we can do that's a little more, puts a finer point on that. What does that look like? What is, is there a plan? Is there, is that in writing in any way now, in terms of a, a tree management plan over the 10, over 10 years, and cut in that cost out?
So, and so let me just start from, we've brought in, staff has brought in before you a couple of tree permits. Recently, the Mercer and a couple others where, you know, you've been asked, you know, obviously the cost of the trees is absorbent, whether it's just to a property owner, single-family home, and it's $35,000, or to an institutional property like this one, and it's half a million. So the code does provide for you to create special mitigations. That means, you know, there are specific things provided in the code, planting within the same species. The director has some discretion, in this case it'd be the planning commission, or an in lieu fee to the tree, the city's tree, the tree fund. So in this case, we've just created a complete hybrid of, we've worked with the applicant. Obviously, you know, they need to have some removal in order to facilitate this construction. We know that there, if you read their, I don't know how many, there are 20 some odd tree mitigations in here, or their, their tree report, that they want some monitoring and some, and a maintenance plan. So this, these conditions that are mentioned in this condition number 29 are actually condition 28. Numbering changed as we morphed these. So I need to change that to follow. My apologies, I didn't catch that, but I changed a number of times. So the number 28 says, "A monitoring and maintenance plan for the project site shall be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to the demolition of the existing facility. The monitoring and maintenance plan shall specifically track trees within the open space area located to the north of the proposed facility, and including that may be declining and potentially hazardous to Kuyama Road." This is part of their tree report. So we're trying to incorporate, we're trying to not overly condition somebody when they've already had this condition on, as part of their own tree report, and to allow them to use funds from things that they're doing in order to accomplish the things that we're then conditioning them with, if that makes any sense at all. So what we're asking is, one, we don't even know if the final amount would be 466,000. That really has to do with how many trees come out, so that, that, that amount will lower. The offset is, Commissioner Nolan has pointed out, of any trees that are of the same species, oak for oak, then, then that, and that, and they get that value and the amount of that, of that labor, et cetera, of planting that tree. And then finally, we've got these mitigations we're conditioning with them. We, the staff really feels strongly that we want people to take care of their, their urban forest. So we want to encourage them, why not let them use the, the amount on site? So any part of that that you don't like, you're, it's subject to you, to changing that condition. This is just something that we worked out pretty diligently with the applicant, because honestly, when it really came down to it, when, and you're, you're telling an applicant they have a half a million dollars in tree mitigations, it's a little overwhelming. And, and so they're going to do everything they can do to keep that figure down low. And they're going to do, and they, and we concur with them that, that it's their money. And if they, and if they want to use it on site and use that to keep their, their current forest out there, maintain it, then we felt that was a just and valuable thing to do. And so ultimately, it just whittles down to what would be left, once they do what they need to do. And they're going to be submitting this plan to us at a, at a stage later in the construction, because at this point in time, we don't know. I, if I ask this person to bond or to submit, you know, a half a million dollars, you know, that would be punitive, I think, at this point. It is a very unusual circumstance. And we're going to have to work with them to make sure that we end up with enough documentation, that we know what the final fee will be. They're going to be able to provide for us the offsets, and then we're going to come down later on. And I, and I don't really know how to word it other than that, because there's just too many unknowns at this point.
Further point to note on that.
Thank you. Thank you for the microphone. Further point to note, this condition is structured to align the city's incentives with the applicant's incentives. The city would like to see the number of trees removed reduced to, obviously, given a project of this size, it can't be no removals, given that location. Some have to come out. Aligning the condition to provide that the tree mitigation in lieu payment is cut down, if the number of trees removed is reduced, aligns the applicant's incentives with the city's goal of reducing the tree, the tree removal count. But it's set at a max of 53.
So a comment. And I'm not opposed to what you're proposing here, I think, generally. But where I do have a question, and actually my leading question after, during the presentation was, what has been your maintenance plan to date? So I'm in favor of doing, using part of the mitigation funds to, to further enhance the existing oak forests there. But at the same time, I think a property owner needs to take some responsibility and not wait for something like this and have it all come from mitigation funds. So that's kind of where my, my question or my little gray area is, is that I think the property owner needs to take some responsibility. But yes, we could use some of it. And I'm, I'm sort of grappling with, you know, how to put that together at this point, because we, there's so many loose ends. I also wanted to possibly consider a couple of items, and I'll read them off, and we can discuss them and see if it makes sense. Some of the things that I had brought up earlier regarding mitigation was, and Kathleen, you actually just mentioned it, to include replacement with like native species. So in other words, we're taking out, I forgot if it's the 30, 35 some odd coast live oaks. We mitigate with that. I also would say to source or indicate the effort to source native trees from a local gene pool, which I had brought up earlier. And then replace some of the specified tree species on the landscape plan with additional native, native local species. And then the other one was to either transplant some or demonstrate the effort to, to transplant some of the corcus agrofolia species. I don't know, maybe that's just too loose. I'd have to look at the language, but I'm just kind of throwing that out there for discussion, and then maybe we can tighten it up.
I agree with Commissioner Nolan's points. I think, I think those are all excellent points. I, I think the one thing that I just want to be concerned about is that on this project, then when we do this condition, that we're not setting a, that we're setting the best precedent possible for future development projects, right? So, so I think that this is, yeah, something we need to be really tight about, and that we're all on the same page. I'd say one thing, well, I'm interested to hear what other people have to say first, other than my agreement.
Although I'm in agreement with keeping the money in the project itself. I, I think Mr. Turner's comment was very well taken, in that, you know, the money, you know, that they have to spend here is for the welfare of the whole. So I prefer to see the money be reinstated into the project in this case.
And I'm going to say that I'm in agreement with you. And some of the items I'm bringing forward aren't necessarily more costly. The transplanting would be something you would have to look at. I know I've worked on projects, and it, it made sense to do it. So I kind of wanted to give you the option to just do it and/or demonstrate that you made the effort to do it. But the things like using, sourcing from a local gene pool, whether you buy them from one nursery or the other one, one's might have the local gene pool, the cost is still going to be the same. So I'm very cognizant of not making this overburdened some. But at the same time, we do have a tree protection ordinance, and for many, many reasons that I, the trees are very valuable. And I think you've indicated that you're, you have the same feeling about them. So.
Can we ask the applicant if the suggestions that Commissioner Nolan are making are acceptable?
I think generally, yes, that's truly acceptable, and, and it, it doesn't affect the cost. The transplanting, I think, is, is another issue that we want to keep open and, and, and obviously, we can investigate it a little bit more, depending on the size of the tree, where it is, what its health is, how long it would take to box. All those things would need to be analyzed. And we're trying to move this project pretty quick. So just thinking off the top of the, it would have to be pretty small trees to transplant it at this point. The bigger ones, we're going to be moving too quick.
Awesome. Go ahead.
I was going to say, in relating to what Scott just said, there is a condition, number 60. And the very first phrase is, "Whenever practicable, you know, healthy oak sycamore trees that have been designated for removal shall be boxed and shall be relocated to an off-site location." However, that looks, to me, that, that condition kind of provides flexibility that they, they need to, you know, to deal with, give them options. So.
I, I'd just like to have one, a little bit input in that. So the issue I think you need to balance is, again, this is a pool of money. If, for every tree that he boxes up and he does, the applicant does what you're asking him to do, and it fails, that all comes out at us $466,000. So if you're really trying to keep this, this site planted with trees and trees that are going to come up, I think the applicant's trying to tell you that they're going to go for, they're looking at a long-term view. They're, they're talking about a 10-year plan. That was their suggestion. A longer plan to, one, maintain those older oaks on the property, plant new that would then be coming up subsequent, and that money would be then an infusion into the site. If you're, if, if you're doing transplants and it comes off the, the top of this 466,000 and they fail, you've reached nothing. So I'm just trying to explain. So, so that's why I think he's trying to say to you, they want to use this money to their best advantage for a long-term view of being in this community long time. And that's why they've asked for this, this, this management plan to be 10 years. And I will only also offer for your consideration that while there can be criticisms here in Ohi about how people maintain their trees, there's generally a standard for, when there's nobody around, we quite have, like you said, we let these old trunks maintain and they decay, blah, blah, blah. There's a different standard once you put people closer to these trees. And there are some things that need to be done, because they're moving people and circulation closer to some of these trees that were allowed to just kind of stay in a natural state, or maybe, maybe even decline. And so some of that needs to be done, because how those trees interrelate with who's on the site has changed. So just wanting, so they're aware of that. We've talked this through. I don't have a problem. It's one to offer, with the suggestions, I want to offer that, again, we're trying to make the most practical use out of these funds for the applicant.
I'd like to see at least some use be made of the trees that are cut down. I don't know what that use would be. I know in the past, we've talked about other things. Does anybody have any?
Well, sure, it could go to public art or something. But I would say one of the best things for the site, and the easiest thing to do, and it's going to happen no matter what, is you keep the mulch on site and reuse it in your landscape. I mean, that's no additional cost. They're, they're going to be doing that anyway. But it's a benefit to the plant material in the soil and reducing water and what have you. So unless, unless you had another option.
No, I mean, I, I think staff has done a good job. I do think that we should add some language about, you know, what you said about the like-for-like, local sourcing. I do think, based on the information from the applicant, that transplanting might be not the best use of the funds at this time.
Discretion. Correct.
Right. And it's already in there in number 60. And I, like I said, I brought it up for discussion. And as a matter of fact, I already took a pencil and went, put big X through it. So just wanted you to know that.
Okay. So do we have the pieces of this condition together then? We've got, do, are you taking notes there, Mr. Summers? Okay. Pardon?
I can try to explain how I understand this-
Okay.
And then you tell me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
I think this is probably best incorporated is perhaps an added sentence to condition number 29, which is our, the condition we've been talking about. First, in that condition, change the two references. The current call-out that's number 29 should be to number 28. And the current call-out that's to number 59 should be to number 57. And then add a new sentence that would require, that would state, "The final tree mitigation plan-" plan shall provide, to the extent possible, for replacement of native trees with similar native trees and for sourcing of new trees from local gene pools, and shall consider use of transplant," no, well, I think the transplanting is picked up by condition 60, so I would stop it there.
Can I ask for a point of clarification, because I understood it a little bit different? I, I understood that you wanted the offset to be here where it says, "The final mitigation plan must indicate the value of newly planted trees," and so you're not going to give them credit for all newly planted trees. You want it like-for-like if they want credit. Is that my understanding?
No, no, let's, yeah, let's go back now that we've had the discussion, now we need to get the language straight, and I'm glad you brought that up. So, they can use the other trees, but in addition-
All they want, but they're not going to get credit against that $466,000.
No, they can get credit for it.
Oh, they can, okay.
But I would like to see the quantity of native trees that were removed replaced with like species.
So, why don't we condition a percentage or a number, like 50%, or, I, I don't know.
So, in other words, they have, well, I'd have to pull the numbers out right now, so...
So, let me just be clear that the way this condition was written was it would give them credit for all trees planted, you know, regardless of the species, and I was understanding you wanted it to be moved over to oaks, and that's not correct then?
No.
Okay.
That, go ahead.
Sorry, we're sharing the mics here. It sounds like what you, you want them to allow to credit all the trees they plant against the cost, but to the extent possible to plant native trees instead of, instead of the native trees they remove, or else, do you want to require X inches of native trees removed means Y inches equal to X must be planted of new native trees? Or do you want it just be something less specific than that?
All right, so, I would like the native trees to be replaced, the native trees to be removed, replaced with native trees wherever they are on the property, but in addition, the other ornamental trees, all of them would be counted towards the mitigation. Yeah, in other words, I don't want this to be hard, I'm appreciating what you're doing, I'm just trying to get, make sure we get a couple of things covered, and I don't, not looking for, trying to make-
Can I, um-
Go ahead.
Can I, can we word it to where they have, like, are you going to be, like, how you said originally, coastal oak, or are you going to allow any oak tree?
I think I would allow any oak.
Okay. And so, you're wanting, as Matt indicated, diameter for diameter, because obviously they're going to-
No, I never said, I never, so, in other words, I'm trying to make it flexible.
So, a small tree can replace a big tree?
No, that's, I think where I'm a little having a hard time with this is because we just have this dollar amount and we still don't know what the trees are. I'm trying, I want it to be fair, number one, I don't want it to be making it hard and it doesn't make sense, but I would like, I mean, basically, we'd have to, I just-
Traditionally, the mitigation in the code section says, you take one out, you know, you're planting as Matt, Matt indicated, you know, you're, you measure the big tree you're taking out, and then you have to, you have to-
Right.
Right, and that makes it hard because obviously, you're putting a lot more trees in because you're putting smaller diameter trees.
Right, and in addition, we're talking about having this maintenance tenure, which I'm in favor of.
I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the wording so I can implement it. It gets hard when I, when I can't implement it and I'm not doing what you're asking me to do. So, if we're taking out a gigantic oak tree, you're okay if they replace that tree with a same species, whatever size it is, they get the value of that tree, but they don't get the value of the big one they took out. They're, they're, you know, they're not balanced, you're just one-for-one for tree. Is that what I'm understanding?
I wasn't really going there, does anyone else want to have any ideas on this? I'm, I'm feeling a little-
I like, I like Matt's first definition. Can you reread what you said, because I think he nailed it the first time.
So, the, I'm happy to do so, and that would be that the final mitigation plan shall provide for replacement of native trees, removed with native trees, on an equal basis, inches removed is inches replaced. That requirement is effectively a requirement to significantly increase the tree count, and that's the point that I want, that I think Ms. Wall is trying to say, and I want the commission to be very aware of that.
This may not be practical.
As a practical matter, I'm not sure this site can fit enough trees to replace.
Right, that's, that won't work, yes.
Right, and in addition, some of the ornamentals that are already on the plan could fulfill part of that role.
Well, and that would be-
But we don't know all the numbers yet.
Well, and the part of it is you're, in order to get the project approved, given the way they're having to work with balancing the city approvals and the Oshpart approvals, they're not going to be able to have those numbers at this point, and they can't move forward without approval first here.
The applicant would like to weigh in a second.
I might suggest, I, I think I understand where you're trying to get from. We're, we're taking out 35 oak trees. Let's at least make sure we're putting in at least 35 oak trees.
Of the same species.
Of the same species. And then in addition to that, let's get rid of some of the ornamentals that you have and put in even more, but at the very least, let's replace, out of our hundred and some trees, let's have 35 of those be oak trees.
I think I could go with that, thank you. And in other words-
That's tit for tat.
I think what it is, is we're looking at, you know, this, the maintenance plan, which I have no idea what that cost is going to be, I'm, I'm trying to weigh it all in my head, but I think that would work.
So, so Matt, that's, so, I understand it as, you know, you're plant, you're going to replace a tree with a, a tree of the same species, regardless of size.
And the size component comes in on the value side.
Right.
That's where you, you'll capture the value of the large oaks that are removed.
Got it, right. Whatever the difference is between the smaller diameter versus the original.
Yes.
And that value will be incorporated into the mitigation plan over the 10-year period, blah, blah, blah.
Correct.
Yay. Commissioner Foster, did you have something else? Okay, are we through the weeds with the trees? No puns intended.
Yes, I think you did.
Okay.
So, not to beat a dead horse, but, as a lawyer, I'm all about language, I'm all about words. What I think would implement what we've just discussed, the final mitigation plan shall provide for replacement of native trees removed with at least 35 native oak trees, period, with the understanding that the value point is built into the existing language. Thank you.
Now, I wouldn't suggest on, on the, on the condition number four, which is on page eight of attachment A, which is prior to the issuance of a final landscape plan, that then you morph that one because obviously, I neglected to follow through what I had in the staff report, which is also, in compliance with Article 12, it also needs to say, and executive order B-2814 and B-2915, which are the Wilo and Mewo respectively, and that if you would like to then add on this one, that the, replace ornamental trees as appropriate with, blah, I think this might be okay, because this is really speaking more towards the landscape plan, that might be a place where you may want to do some of that suggestions in there, but I did find my own error on that particular condition.
Be good with the trees?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think now, do we, if we replace, I mean, I said this earlier, to replace some of the species that are listed on the landscape plan with natives, which could be oaks, but the question is, do we put in a quantity, do we, Kathleen? I mean, this is a question, I'm not sure like how specific we need to be there.
Matt was saying, just give direction to staff to make sure that, that the ornamental trees are, are replaced with-
Yeah, and I'm not saying all of them, because there's a lot of trees that are being specified, but I, I'm wanting some of them to be, I'm just trying to figure out, do we say a percentage, do we do, so just, I'm not just-
I mean, do we know how, we don't know how many, that's the problem, issue here.
This, this is one where you have two options to consider. One would be to require some condition language, two would be to direct staff together with an approval if you go that route. When staff reviews the final landscape plan, see that it has exchanged as many of the ornamental trees as possible with native trees.
I like that. But what does everyone else think about that? Good?
Okay. Hack?
Secondary access road, when I was first looking through this, I was thinking, why don't we just put a gate up there? After further, I was just curious as to what the other commissioners say, I mean, because yes, I hear the, I hear the safety card thrown, as far as, okay, there's a catastrophic event and somebody has to go out there and unlock the gate, but at least they have a road, that's my response to that. But then I hear Mr. Stewart's comment that, you know, staff is going to work with the traffic engineers and the civil engineers, and they're going to make the best determination possible. So, I want to know what the rest of the commissioners think.
So, basically, the traffic engineers are going to be looking at the location, but they're not going to be determining if there's a gate or a lock. And I tend to agree that, I think the, the road should be, have some sort of a closed, whether it's a gate or a lock or whatever, because if no one's monitoring it, why, you know, people will be using it, and I think it's a, it's a dangerous location, and once again, it's a highly used street for school access. There's actually a, a trail that actually the driveway apron is going to go probably right over. There's a decomposed granite trail that the students use right there, and I know in complete streets, we're looking at putting bike lanes out there. So, I, I think that it should be locked or closed.
Mr. Stewart, since there's no turn lane there or anything else, could a gate in some ways be counterproductive? I mean, is that something, again, that's going to throw us back onto a thorough analysis?
Traffic safety point of view, no. I think it may be a maintenance problem for the hospital, because a road that is closed becomes a nice skateboard ramp, and there's other issues that they have to deal with when you don't have a usable road, but that would be their, their concern at, at that point.
Ms. Wall, did you have a comment?
Well, I don't think that really has anything to do with whether you gated or not, because it's not going to be used, it's emergency secondary, so whether, you know, it's not going to be used except for emergencies, so it's going to be an attractive nuisance regardless of whether it's gated or not. But you would condition it to have a gate, to have a setback, you know, a distance to where someone would be, if they went to turn in, would be able to get off the road and then back up. But, you know, it's done all the time with gating. Normally, you know, if you're going to have emergency gates, that's, it's a crash gate and, you know, the fire department will go right through it. I mean, they have no F's and buts about going right through those types of, you know, it's going to be like a cattle crossing type thing, it's not going to be some substantial gate. I mean, if there was truly an emergency, they'll go right through it, that's just the way it's done. But, you know, it's really, they, they don't really want to gate it, and I think if, you know, it's your discretion of whether you want to have a gate there, but we would just recommend that it be set back enough that somebody who's pulling in who sees the driveway cut can get off the road, realize it's gated, and then turn around and go back. I think there's a couple of them in the community that, like that, up and down Ojai Avenue, I think there's one or two, if you, if you notice, so that that would be pretty typical of what you'd do if you wanted to gate it. Like you said, you can put a Knox box, has a lock on it, the fire department has the key to the Knox box, they get out, they unlock it, and they're in. That's how those things work. It's done routinely that way, they just don't prefer to do that. So, if you have issues, if you have issues with it being skateboards, you can, you know, you can talk, we can, we could certainly look at, you know, this, you know, they, it's kind of curvilinear, we had talks about the straightness of the access going out, we talked about traffic calming, you know, I mean, we're concerned about it being a cut through, you know, that was one of the things we had early on, talked about, are people going to do that to get from one point to the other? But it's, it's curvilinear enough and it kind of goes around different issues, that we thought that that wasn't really going to be a problem. But if we are concerned about skateboarders or bicycles back there, we could do some, you know, undulations or something on it that would stop that, slow the traffic down. But again, those were all issues that were thrown out based on the fact of it being emergency access only.
Just to address the issue a little bit, we talked about this with staff, you know, quite a bit. The problem I see with putting a gate sort of back far, far enough off the road that you can pull in is that it's not going to be wide enough to turn around, so you're going to ask, having asked people to back out onto the highway, which I think, I think creates a danger. The other is it, it creates a huge dead-end driveway that goes up there, so if somebody goes up there for whatever reason, now we're going to have to start carving out a very, you know, a hammerhead in a place where we don't want to grade and we don't want to take trees out. So, what I would recommend, if you have an issue, is maybe we set a review time after this is open, so that the whole issue gets reviewed six months after. See if there's a problem. If there's a problem, then let's address it at that point rather than doing a condition for it now.
Is there a mechanism for doing that?
There's always a review, I've seen conditions where this will be reviewed six months after.
My, my other concern, I'm sorry, Chair, my other concern is that we haven't had fire department weigh in on this, and in their access to get to the building, I think relies on their ability to use this driveway and have access to it. So, if you do condition something of that nature, it would be subject to fire department review as well. And I concur with the architect's thoughts on this, is, is that after he spoke, I, I think we've dialogued this at a staff level.
If I may ask you, the applicant, what measures and assurances do you have, can you tell us that, that is, that access through that road, that secondary access is going to be minimized? Because you seem to be fairly confident that it's not going to be used that much, but we see the potential for someone wanting to cut, cut through the property or, you know, a lot of different circumstances. So, what is your basis for your understanding?
First of all, we have a, we have a letter from the owner of Lifeline, that this is not going to be used for emergency use in the sense that they, they much prefer and want to continue to use the Maricopa Highway as, as, for, for ambulance uses are coming through. I think we've, we've provided that, I'm, I'm not sure if the commissioners have it in their packets, but that, that letter's been provided. The other thing is, is we think that we have the same interests as the neighbors in terms of the use of, of this driveway, in the sense that we, we had a lot of concern initially when, when it was being designed, in that we didn't want it to be a straight shot down through the property, you know, during, during high school hours or for, for the students, you know, that's, that does not create a, a safe environment for, for our staff, our patients, our visitors. You, you don't appreciate in this design, but actually, that's, that's where some of the slope of the driveway came in, even as you come in just past where the existing skilled nursing facility is, from there, it, it actually curves, the, the, the driveway curves, so it's not a straight shot as you're going through the property. So, we're going to be taking measures from, from the hospital's perspective to ensure that that's not being utilized for those, those purposes.
And employees?
And, and employees as well. I, I think, you know, the, the main concern is, is that we're, we're, we're just under eight acres and we only have access from, from one main road, and we're providing emergency care, and, and I, I think when we were looking and doing a lot of the facility master planning and site planning, it was identified that it, it would make a lot of sense to have access onto the property from, from another area, and that's, that's where, that was really the motivating factor.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I just add that, you know, some of the design components that we're, we're looking at is to really make this a road that looks more like a driveway, so it doesn't have curbs, gutters, it doesn't look like a street, it looks more like a lane. The other thing is that we're, we're not going to sign it on the street. We're not going to publicize that that's an entry to the hospital in any printed literature. How do you get to the skilled nursing facility? You enter off of here at, you know, Maricopa Highway. So, all of the effort is going to go into not publicizing that this is a through route, but it is there in case it's needed.
I feel like any condition we're going to make at this point is just operating in a vacuum, in terms of enough research and-
Not necessarily.
So, can I offer something? So, I just want to make this really clear.
Yep.
So, all along, this has been an emergency secondary access. Conditions have been placed on there that they're not allowed to use it as a second access because of the issues with the traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? Along Kuyama, there are residences there, they're back out onto Kuyama all day long, you know, they, they don't turn around and come forward on it. So, occasionally, that somebody would wrongly turn in, it's not going to cause a huge traffic issue. If they wanted to control- If they wanted to control the traffic going up that long driveway, they can sign on their own property and tell them this is, is, you know, just like anything else. Emergency access only, do not go down this way. I mean, all those things can be taken care of if you want to gate it. That's not an issue. But we just felt that, I mean, I don't think there's anything at all about the way they're proposing this because we've really conditioned them. If you want to put a condition that's going to be reviewed, then you're going to have to make this condition that they're going to analyze their traffic, they're going to do some traffic counts, they're going to go out there and have people somehow or another, it can't be anecdotal. It can't just be that staff's going to go out there and make a determination that people are, how are we going to decide that? That's, this is, it is very hard on staff when we get conditions that we can't really implement and then later on, we're taking a task because we're not implementing them. We just make, got to make sure if you're going to make something that's retroactive, that it really has some kind of an analysis that they're doing. They get it to staff and we're looking really, how many people are really using this, this, this access other than secondary emergency access? We felt that they, we were going to take them at their word on it and that the operational issues they brought forward were enough. That's just why it was conditioned the way it is.
If there's any condition, I think what we, I would prefer is to have that condition placed on the hospital itself to sign the road adequately so anybody pulling in there would know that they're going the wrong way. Stop, don't go. No, I heard you say there won't be any signs up at the front at the Kuyama Road. So are you suggesting that there is going to be zero signs, like not an entry, this is not an entry, this is wrong, wrong way, turn back? What's your suggestion there?
I guess we were, we were thinking we wouldn't put, you know, Ojai Hospital entry up there.
Get that, yeah.
At, at that. I, I don't know that we, we would put up signs, beware, you know, private property or try and scare people out of it. It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go that far. It would, it would merely be that you wouldn't be making a point that this was a preferred or, or main entry to the hospital or to the, or to the skilled nursing facility. That the road is, is like any other driveway that's unsigned.
Do you object to, do you object to putting in signs that say, wrong way?
I don't know.
What sign would you put on there?
Maybe emergency access.
Yeah, emergency exit only, not a through, not a through fair.
Yeah.
You know, there are signs that you can come up with.
Yeah.
I just think there's something to be said about putting something there that goes into the psyche of people making that turn in there that tells them that this is an emergency road only. And I think if you do put signage up, and I'm talking about small signage, creative signage, that just continually reminds people that, yeah, you're going the wrong way. So it's going to appeal to people who are, are going to obey those signs and those who aren't, aren't. But those are always a smaller group of people. So I would like to just condition and forget, I, I think it's wise to leave the gate out of it for an emergency exit. I, I do think there's, there's lots of problems with the turnaround, safety issues, coming off Kuyama Road and having to come back in there, hit a gate and have to back out of there. I, I also think that there's, staff is thoroughly going over this process and are going to come up with a, the line of sight issue is going to be established to the best possibility. And I would only condition that they put up signage on their property to, to direct their employees and people that are possibly turn in stating that that is either an emergency road. Now, I can't come up with the exact wording of that right now, but I would really, I would assign that to staff to work with the client to come up with the correct wording of those signs, whatever they are, to dissuade people from going down the road.
This is kind of like, this goes, this goes back. So then we just don't do anything and we go back to what Mr. Stewart and staff suggested. I don't necessarily know if conditioning a sign, you know, to read this or that. I think that we just leave it, trust them to come up with the best option, or we put up a gate.
Well, I think this, again, you know, a sign on Kuyama hasn't been analyzed and the, and it's going to be just, it could have the potential to be just as dangerous as the gate because you're going to have someone slowing down to read a sign and they're trying to make a, a turn, then they stop and realize, oh, I can't make a turn. Okay, so I, we'd have to analyze that. I think the only thing that makes sense is on the, on the long going out that they say emergency access only. And that only, because at that point, there's someplace you can turn around on your site. They would have the, the ability to manage their onsite circulation themselves. Everything that you're talking about tonight, I think this has potential to either cause more problems or it hasn't been analyzed. And I think we're just going to have to, you know, really go with the way it's been conditioned or ask the traffic management plan, you know, for them to submit it and have, you know, our, our engineer look at it. Because really honestly, I just think all of it just really has the potential to cause more problems than the way it's just been presented tonight.
I see it a little simpler than that. I do. I, when we're talking about assigning, you pull, someone sees a driveway there, they pull into it, you go in 20 feet, you see a, a small 12 by 12 sign that says, secondary emergency access only. Done. It's not on the road, it's not a head turner. It's simple. We keep it just simple and leave it as it is and adopt the condition, leave it to the discretion of our building director. They know what they're doing to deal with the technicalities that surround that.
I just want to make this very clear. Steve's not an engineer. This is a separate person that's been analyzing this because I think there's some confusion on that. You know, Mr. Stewart is the building official, not an engineer. So we would be sending that to our, our contract, you know, engineer who works on the traffic. So, but he's not here tonight. So both of us are trying to pitch hit for him, but I'm just saying that at this point in time, you know, again, the applicant's going to tell you now you have someone turning around that sees this sign. So you're talking about someone going all the way down into the facility but not coming back out that way.
Twenty foot car length into it.
Okay.
Like any driveway down that, on Kuyama.
Are you saying that that would have to be analyzed?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain that, you know, that we're trying to craft a condition that we know doesn't have traffic implications and neither Steve Stewart or I are the traffic engineers. And that's what I'm trying to make sure everybody understands, that neither one of us nor Matt are sitting here analyzing this traffic implication of the condition that you're suggesting and placing on this project tonight.
Okay, can we?
If I can just add...
Sure, go ahead.
I would prefer that you leave it up to staff to make whatever recommendation based on our, our traffic consulting engineer on what would be appropriate. I'm very concerned that the applicant's traffic engineer has indicated in their report there's a potential hazard there. And that has to be, you know, weighed out in, in our full decision-making process. And so I clearly understand from the planning commission what your, your intent is, but I think you ought to leave that up to the discretion of staff.
I have a comment. So this is interesting. Basically, we're, what we're seeing is a very schematic maybe on how this is going to be handled and we're being asked to make a, approve it. And I think all of our questions are really valid, but we haven't been given the information. Like normally, if that would have come in, it would have been engineered, we would have seen on the plan, we would have looked at the grades, we would have known if there was enough of a setback for a vehicle to come in and out. So to ask us to, you know, make a decision on this, I think is a little presumptuous. I just don't, I don't feel like we have the information, we don't have the traffic engineer to even ask a question of...
Well, clearly, that's what I was trying to explain, that no matter how many times we talk about this gating of it and, and somebody anecdotally thinks this causes problems and somebody else thinks anecdotally that causes problems, we don't know. And that's what I was trying to get at, you know, the best guess and you've got difference of opinions of people here sending it, that gives you an idea that it just needs to be vetted a little bit more as far as what they do with the, with the driveway.
Okay, can I hear it from Mr. Craiglin?
Yeah, just, just maybe a little clarification on the analysis. The, the traffic engineer did analyze the site distance of that proposed location. And in their report, they actually recommended mitigations for that. Their mitigations were, I think, threefold. I think one, I'm going off of memory here, so one was to move it, in this particular case, to the east 10 feet. And then also because of the overgrowth, which is also beyond the property, is making sure that the foliage that was grown out there be properly trimmed and maintained so that the sight lines for that moving at 10 feet worked. Then it would become, and signage, I think that was a third piece in terms of, of the appropriate signage from the site distance analysis. I think during that discussions with staff, they weren't maybe as comfortable with that yet, so they wanted to review it with the engineer and have further analysis when they suggested to move it, you know, 80 or 90 feet down to the east. But that, our engineer was concerned. And so that's where we got to the point of saying we need to study exactly, you know, is it 10 feet, 15 feet? So it has been analyzed and there's been mitigations proposed from the traffic engineer in terms of how to handle that. And I think the condition that came out of it for right in, right out only was the compromise of its current location. So, so that has been analyzed from a safety perspective and I think the, we'll say we're conservative in terms of the condition that right in, right out was the condition to protect that safety and not allow it to be a fully functional driveway in that, in that analysis. So.
Yeah, I, I would just add to the, on the, on the signage issue versus the gate. I think Commissioner Foster had a, had a very good idea. You put that on the property, you put it down. Does it deter someone and make them back up at that point? No, it happens the second time around. The second time, oh, okay, I'm not supposed to use this road this way. Next time, I won't use it. You know, so that's what signage does for you. And I think it's very simple and very straightforward. And it meets our intent, which is to inform people of what that road is for, not to hit them over the head and not police them with a gate.
All right, one more. Now we got to get out of the weeds and move on. No? Okay, I thought you had something to say? No?
Go ahead.
Okay, no, that's, that's it. I just was going to try to bring this to conclusion.
I'll just make a last comment.
Yeah.
So the other thing is, I brought this up earlier about the width of the emergency access road. It's now 25 feet. I know that has to go to the fire department. So once again, there's, there are a lot of loose ends. So it's not necessarily a driveway, it's, it's an actual road. And I think the other issue is, you know, anywhere on the width of your property, it's pretty much either on the crest or on one side or the other, the crest of that hill, which is a crucial location. I'm just pointing, I, I wish we had more definite information here on that.
I, I mean, I think we have to decide if they should have any secondary access because, because that's really what this comes down to, is that if they're going to have a secondary access, that's where it has to be. It has to be somewhere on that road. And we have great minds looking at this. It's not completely dialed in, but obviously a hospital, you know, building, you know, the engineers, nobody wants there to be, everybody's cognizant that this is a huge problem. And presumably, they are going to come up with the best solution. I can't imagine this is a place where anybody's going to cut any corners. So if there's going to be a secondary access, and of course, they need one for emergency purposes, it just seems like we're sort of, the die is sort of cast. And, you know, obviously, if you can communicate the sign, if the sign, you know, seems like a really reasonable solution. But again, who knows the impact of anything? Okay.
Well, I still like to, when I was suggesting the sign, it was the same as Stevens' suggestion. It was a small sign on the property, not on the road. And I still think we should condition the property just to put up those signs. I think that's a reasonable thing to do and it, it does exactly what I think it, it needs to do. It, it's slow, it reminds people that it's a private road or it's a, an emergency road. And the first time, yeah, they may go down it, but the second time, they may see. So I, I would think you'd want to do that anyway, right? To minimize the traffic. And so the question is, is do we condition it for that or do we just allow Steven to and the staff to do it within the process that they're going to?
I'm in favor of the signage.
Yeah.
Okay, Mac?
I don't claim to be a traffic expert or know the ins and outs and everything else. I propose that we let, excuse me, staff figure it out. That's, that's my proposal. I think if we start boxing them in, I mean, a sign might not be the best 20 feet in, it might be 25 feet. I don't, I don't know.
I just, I don't think, I think we should just let, unless, unless we're going to like make a definitive statement by saying, put a gate up, I don't think we should get lost in, in. That's my opinion. Okay.
Okay, who loves the sign idea? You love the sign idea?
I like, my opinion is we leave it to the discretion of staff.
You do think so?
And consultant.
Okay.
And they, they've heard us.
Okay.
They know where we're coming from.
Right.
And they'll implement it if it's a worthwhile thing to do. Am I, am I on base with that, Steve? Have, you, you understand at least what we're saying up here, what we're trying to achieve?
I think you could put a condition in there to say that signage, subject to the city engineer's approval. And that would take care of...
Keep it simple.
Of whether we have signage, not signage, where we put the signage, the size of the signage, all of that stuff would work on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Matt?
I think we should talk about it some more. I'm just kidding.
To staff engineer, let's, to, to, to our, our community development engineer. I keep forgetting, we have a, we have a community development engineer. So community development engineer.
Okay, moving on, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the neighbor who expressed the concern about whether or not there was going to be a wall.
There is a wall.
There is a wall, is that on, there will be a wall or there's going to be a wall? It's on the landscape plan or?
It's on the plans. There is a wall on the, all along the property line. It's similar to the wall we've already put up.
Okay.
As, and was acceptable to, to one side.
Okay.
We're looking at putting it up before construction of, of the grading plan so that we can work with their concerns, dust and everything else. We think it's a good idea.
Okay, that's...
Scott, if I may, are those those modular concrete or whatever slats you're dropping in impulse?
Yeah.
And that's going to go up both the easterly side and?
All the way along the top and all the way along the bottom.
Yeah.
And it has that Ojai feel to it, it's not like...
Looks great.
Are there anything, anything else we need to review, discuss, or can we entertain a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you want me to make a motion? Okay. Now, I'm going to need some help with some of the language that we created for the trees. What else did we create?
If you'd like, I could go through what I understand to be the changes to the draft resolution and then you...
Okay, so what I'm going to do, yeah, what I'll do is I'll, I'll make the motion and then I'll say, with, with added conditions that Matt will read. How's that sound?
That works.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve, we adopt PC resolution approving the lot line adjustment and merger of LLA 15-01, design review permit DRP 15-03, variance 15-03, entry permit T15-12, subject to the findings and conditions of this approval and the added conditions that Matt is going to read.
And my understanding of those added conditions is as follows, and modifications. For condition number four on page eight of 25 of attachment A, where it says, prior to issuance of any permits, the final landscape plan in compliance with Article 12 of the Ojai Municipal Code and the Governor's Executive Orders B-28-14 and B-29-15 and state law shall be approved, which builds in the new state wellow requirements. On page 13 of attachment A, condition number 29, the two numerical references in this last sentence are changed to be cross-referencing conditions number 28 and 57, and a new sentence is added to read, "The final mitigation plan shall provide for replacement of native oak trees removed with at least 35 native oak trees." Then on page 20 of attachment A, condition number 77, the first sentence would be changed to read, "Prior to issuance of final zoning clearance, the applicant shall provide documentation of implementation of a traffic management program which shall include, but may not be limited to the following," and the list of the five things. And then at the condition number 80 on the same page, page 20, add a new sentence to read, "The applicant shall install emergency access only signs on the driveway off Kuyama Road, subject to the approval of the Community Development Department, with the understanding that that'll build in the engineer's approval." And that was all of the changes that I understood. Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Okay. All right, any further discussion?
I'd like to compliment the applicant on this, you guys just did amazing job. There's so much stuff in here, and you guys have been very patient with us, and I think, I've been very pleased with the way everybody's worked together with staff, and, and I'm just really impressed with the quality of the application, and look forward to having this go through.
I just wanted to say, even though we talked for twenty minutes or a half hour about a gate or not a gate, I feel these conversations are very important. I mean, we are in a social contract, the Ojai Hospital does choose to do business in Ojai, we're grateful that they're doing business in Ojai. I feel that as the planning commission, we have an obligation to the city, the people, and the businesses to get into the weeds at these, at these times. But as Commissioner Merk said, I really appreciate the patience, the dedication, and the forty-four pages of flow rates, or whatever that is in there. It's a very exhaustive package, thank you.
Well, yeah, I would like just compliment the applicants, because I believe they really are exemplary, the way they approach this project. It's a complicated project, obviously, the architecture's good, but they're sensitive to their neighbors, you're trying to work, you're showing a spirit of cooperation, and that's what it takes to get things done in this community, and I'd like to see a lot more of it. So thank you for that.
I too would like to thank you, you know, for listening to us, going back and forth, your patience, but I believe that you understand where we're coming from, and, and the collaboration has been well taken, and I appreciate the thoroughness of the reports also, the package.
Yes, it's a testament that there has not been one person coming up from the public objecting to this project. That's very rare. So that says a lot about the cooperation between you and staff. And, and the other thing, I wanna send out major kudos to staff for creating such a great report and putting this all together. It was well done, and I actually enjoyed going through all five hundred pages of it this weekend.
Yep, ditto, to staff, to the applicant. Okay, so we're, we've got a second, right? Yeah, okay, so Amber?
Commissioner Merk?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lajowski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Zabilla?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well done.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Good luck.
No.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item number three, provisions to conditions of approval for conditional use permits CUP fourteen dash oh three, design review, design review permit DRP fourteen oh seven and variance VAR sixteen oh one, for a new separate two-story building at the rear of Mountain Vista Manor, an existing boarding care facility for the elderly located at six oh two East Oak Street. Like to hear from staff, please.
So we are recommending that you continue this item to the March second, twenty sixteen planning commission meeting to allow noticing of the project to include the variance application. I know that you, some of you were here when this project was approved previously, and this seemed to be a very minor modification to conditions. They had a condition on their project with a twenty-five foot access drive from the fire department, they were able to negotiate that down smaller. However, the city of Ojai's requirement is that they have a twenty-foot driveway, and there is a pinch point on this project. The project is, the site itself is subject to land use limitations, and therefore, we feel, and the applicant concurs, has applied for variance, and we believe that that's warranted in this case. Unfortunately, it didn't get noticed with the variance, and so then we're just, we did, notices went out this morning, it has been noticed, they'll be, the project will be noticed and prepared for the March second, and I think the applicant's here, and I think they're in concurrence with that. So that's, I would just, if he has something to say, then other than that, we just ask you to continue it, and we'll bring it forward.
Okay, this is a public hearing item, anybody wanna speak? Okay, can I close the public hearing?
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, that we continue this item to March second, two thousand and sixteen, the regular planning commission meeting, to allow for proper noticing of the project to include the variance application. Do I need to read the design review permit, all that, the number, probably?
Just say as, as stated in the staff-
As stated in the staff report.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Merk?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lajowski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Zabilla?
Yes. Okay, number, item number four, time extension for cottages among the flowers, design review permit DRP five, five dash zero one, three twelve A through F and three fourteen B, West Aliso Street, Ojai, California, APN zero two zero, zero two zero one, two one zero. I'd like to hear from staff.
Thank you very much. Before you sign in the dais, you should have a staff report that's asking for this to be continued. I think that there was some confusion with new staff we have here and myself regarding this. We've been working with the applicant on this extension of the, his permit for the DRP for cottages among the flowers, but at the same time, there was, the applicant has a proposal in for modification of that DRP, and we have been working with the tribe and on cultural resources, and there'd been consultation requests for additional information. And I think there, that, that now the tribe has reached out to us and asked us to do, that it be, the consultation include this extension, and so I think that was just kind of a miscommunication between staff and what, and ensuring that the applicant, that this time extension was also subject to the consultation with the Native Americans. And so, we've talked with them this, this, today, we received, they did some outreach to us, I've talked with the applicant, we're all in concurrence, that we'll get together and meet, we'll iron out the issues with the consultation, I believe the applicant is here in the audience, and we, I've spoke with him today, and he's, he's interested in, in bringing this project into compliance with today's standards as it, as in respect to what we're doing now with cultural resources. And so, I think it's all workable, and everyone's on board on this continuation, and we ask that you just go ahead and, and continue this item. And I'm, I don't know if I put a time, did I ask on the, to continue?
March second.
March second, and I don't, I don't know if we can make that date, but we'd like to try for that date. The applicant's very interested in moving this project forward, and so, and the tribe is very interested in, and is making themselves available to us.
Okay, and open, open the public hearing, like to hear from the applicant, if you have anything to say.
I think I was gonna reserve my presentation as to the justification and reasons for the extension, just wanted to make as a soundbite that certainly hasn't been languishing, we've been working very diligently, it's been a lot of changes to the project that have been affected as, as we took possession and as we saw the site conditions, and also adjacent properties that we're looking at stormwater changes to. So, there's a lot that's been going on, and it's on a week-by-week basis, we have a timeline to present to you if you need more information, but we'll make that whole presentation when we come back, and we're looking forward and happy to sit down with the Native American tribes to, to make sure we come to you with the best possible information. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we were all prepared, so we will be happy to hear you as soon as you come back. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Make a motion, we continue this item as stated in the staff report.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Commissioner Merk?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lajowski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Zabilla?
Yes. Thank you, see you soon. Okay, item number five, Sarasota Park picnic and barbecue area shelter project, PW twenty sixteen dash zero one, located at five ten Park Road. I don't see Mr. Grant here, so-
No, this is more or less a housekeeping item, I'll go ahead and give it, you know, as you know, Mr. Grant was here last meeting and presented to you the Sarasota Park project, and, and the staff report was not accompanied with a resolution. And I think that just has to do with, Mr. Grant doesn't normally prepare reports for planning commission, and he, that was the agreement we made, that he would do the report, and so I told him, well, I'd come back with a resolution, so Mr. Summers helped me prepare a resolution. And again, this is, again, a new process that Public Works was not used to doing in the past, coming for these, it's a, it's a kind of a odd little code section in there, and, and so it was something new that he's doing, and we're newly processing projects in this way. So this is, if you look at the staff report, the resolution in there is pretty short and sweet, and that's what Matt feels we need to do in order to, to approve this, so it's just a matter of confirming your, your vote you did last meeting.
Would you like to make a motion, Mac?
Do we gotta do a public?
Oh, sorry. I'm gonna open the public hearing, anybody like to speak on this matter? I'm gonna close the public hearing. And any further discussion? Okay, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll move, we approve this resolution.
I'll second.
Commissioner Merk?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lajowski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Zabilla?
Yep. Okay, we have no discussion items, so we're gonna move on to informational items, director report and director actions, please.
So, the director decisions before you tonight conclude at February eleventh, and you just see there's miscellaneous permits, we're doing a lot of second unit addressing, registering a lot of abandoned properties, and again, these are just very miscellaneous things, removal of a hazardous tree and then banners to go up in the arcade. Moving on, we have the code enforcement log, I, I feel like I say the same thing each time, it's here for your review, if you have any questions. I'm sort of limited to what I could talk to you about on the code enforcement, I think the idea of the code enforcement log is to make sure that we're moving things off and they're not languishing. So, again, some of these items that are the older items on the list, we're moving forward and working with the city attorney to move some of those things out. I will just preface this by saying, or maybe conclude it by saying, that again, the code enforcement, or code compliance inspector activities are somewhat prioritized, they continue to be, or he continues to be working on abandoned properties, the city's dark sky ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. So sometimes, these cases get waylaid by other priorities, the city council and the city manager directs code compliance activities. So just to let you know, that's how it works sometimes, in case there's-
I'd like to ask you something about that. I'm just curious on the, the climate, there's a huge list here, and I would think there's people, you know, kinda wondering about how many, you know, code violations there are out there. What's the climate in, at, at the office, you might say, regarding all these code violations? I mean, are there people coming in complaining, or generally, is it moving, is it moving-
Well, let's have Mr.-
Forward.
This actually is Mr. Stewart's area, so he can come talk to you, I'll let him do that.
The, we've had a lot of activity on some standard housing conditions, it seems like it's picking up, or we're becoming more aware of it. Also, there is a lot of activity out there with people doing work without permits, and I think a lot of that is due to some of the new stringent requirements that we've instituted on a city basis. And so, the code compliance inspector tends to be busy working on health and safety issues. Not that the other elements are not extremely important, but when we're dealing with potential people getting hurt or sick, or if unfortunate fire starts and they don't have adequate exiting out of facility, those take priority in our review. So, it has, we've, we've experienced an increase, although we do get substantial compliance on a lot of items.
Do you find, with this list, what's the climate like? There's so many more code enforcement items here than ever have been here before, and I'm just curious to know, is, are people cooperating when you bring them in, when you, when you cite them, and how's that interaction going?
I don't think the level of cooperation has changed one way or the other, I just think the volume has increased in that regard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Stewart. Shall we move on to our future agenda items?
Yes. So on March second, you know, of course, it always seems that there's some modification to this future agenda items, we'll have the Mountain Vista Manor coming, the one, and then of course, the cottages if it's ready, and we're, like I said, working diligently to try to get that moving forward. March ninth would be your special meeting, and that would be the Topa Mountain Winery modification. We've met twice with the applicant to ensure that he can move as fast, quickly as he possibly can, you know, so we've met with him, I believe today, yes, it was today, right? I hope so, anyhow, it's a long day today. Anyway, that, moving that forward, and then I think we've moved off to March sixteenth, the second unit discussion item and tiny homes presentation. So, I think that that's pretty much it for right now. Again, staff, staffing is changing a little bit for me right now, our contract planner is, is off on leave now, so we've had new planners come in, so it's a little bit of a transition. You see, the report for cottages was written by Mr. Winiger, he was originally brought in to help me do historic preservation, is now helping me do planning commission, so we've, we've got new faces in the department. Again, most of them just very part-time, trying to help us out and make sure that we're able to move these projects forward. We continue to recruit for an associate planner with no, not much luck in that regard, but again, so, but you'll have to bear with staff a little bit, we're a little bit short on man-hours.
Just wanted to remind everybody that John and I will not be here March second, so we'll need to have a quorum, if you're gonna have a meeting, all you have to show up. Yeah, just-
Okay, planning commission committee reports, Commissioner Nolan and I attended the last city council meeting, and please remind us.
I'll remind you, and I will say that I was there till ten thirty, and I did leave because I hadn't had dinner, and it was up till five the night before, which means I hardly slept, you know, in two hours. So maybe you'll be able to fill in, because I know you were there longer. I'm just gonna go through my notes, basically, their Rotary Club had funds for Libby Park that they presented at the city, it was twenty-four thousand some odd dollars. There were some certificates handed out for service, I think it was Rotary and Optimus Club. There were, the council reports basically spoke about the vacation rentals, and asked for defining thirty days. Let's see, what else do they have here? Oh, it was mentioned to agendize the Topa Mountain Winery project and get support for waiving fees due to some recent issues with, I think it was the overlay. Also, the subject came up about cat declawing and banning that, and mentioned that Lake Acetus was down forty-two percent, that was a report on the water basin. Then the big topic of the night, at least for the, up until ten thirty, was on the housing and the housing element, there was a presentation done by Bill Miley and consultants that they had hired, and people from the Self-Help Housing Corporation. And there were quite a few members from the public there that got up and spoke. I'm just briefing my notes here, pardon me for a second. Basically, they were dealing with were sites ten and eleven that we had in our housing element, so that is the, the property behind here, City Hall, and then an adjacent property over the Public Works yard. And they were proposing- Oh, okay. So that was my report for the night. The bulk of it had to do with the housing.
Thank you, Commissioner Nolan. Okay, so we have no report for Mac, Babs, Commissioner Foster. It looks like you're at Babs next week, the 24th. And then Complete Streets, next meeting is March 2. And then we'll hear from Commissioner Nolan. And our Sustainability Committee, Commissioner Lajowski.
We had our first, first meeting two weeks ago? A week ago? I don't remember when. Friday. We've got a great start. We're looking at, maybe one of you two would be better qualified to enunciate the many avenues we explored.
Right. So one of the things that we are exploring is sustainability. I'm sorry. You know what? I think it's because I haven't had lunch or dinner. I'm a little spacey right now. But anyway, it's a sustainability ordinance, and the city of Golita actually had adopted one. And I wanted to say, my assignment was to contact the author, originator of that ordinance, and I actually just, I did get, hear back from him. I need to send it out. So we're hoping to meet with him. He actually sent us some supporting documents, which I will issue to the other two of you.
So I guess, kind of, it's been a long night. We're looking at this as a, as Commissioner Jagiello said, the goose rather than the egg. So we're looking at a lot of different angles. We're going to talk to the author, the Golita ordinance, which involved kind of study, research projects as a way to look at sustainability issues. And we're trying to find a way to keep as many options open as possible.
It's important to note that what it is, is the ordinance gives the city the ability to have a document that they can allow for certain sustainable technology, you might say, that may not fall into a existing code somewhere, where we could, like, for one example, composting toilets. That's just one, one example of many. This would allow them to be implemented in a limited basis and researched to determine their feasibility and their viability, which is a very important thing, instead of completely being ignored every time because there is no, the cities don't have, doesn't have a place for it. They don't have, it doesn't fit the existing format. So this gives them that place to do it. That's why I think we're looking at that.
One more comment, too, was we, you know, we had discussed also looking at the city's roadmap to sustainability, and then also looking at the defining line between zoning and building, and kind of the overlap and how we want to proceed with that.
Well, thank you for your efforts. Look forward to hearing more. Okay? And then Councilmember Haney. Thanks for hanging in.
This is early.
We try.
This is nothing. Come on, you guys. This is nothing. So a couple of things. You know, Steve just reminded me that the state of California has a sustainability guideline already, so you might even look that up. And the other thing is, you might think of what your mission is and create a mission statement, so that you always have something that takes you back to where you, you know, to where you're going. Otherwise, we're getting it up everywhere. So that's that. Judy Murphy and Bill Miley were the individuals representing the affordable housing, and the self-help group actually did those conceptual drawings for free. That's why when they came to us months ago, it was like, you're willing to do conceptual drawings on, you know, on a two-acre, three-acre parcel of what affordable housing might look on these two parcels? So alls it was, was conceptual drawings brought to the community to say, hey, take a look. If you like it, let's talk more about it. And I think what happened is, coming into it, more people were more concerned about, we've already made a decision, and that we're going to do it, and we're only going to do it here. And the reality was, is it was a great discussion, and it was a great presentation, and it's an opportunity for the community to coalesce around something or somewhere, and do we want to do something? And I, and I think we do. So it's just a matter of getting these two groups, the Bill Miley and the Judy Murphy, and what was the other group called?
The Ojai.
Yeah. It'd be great if they could come together and, and talk about, I think one of the things I said is of not hear where, but come together and just talk about how if that's an important concern for the community, let's, let's come together and figure out how to do it, rather than beating each other up over it. So, and that comes to a lot of things that Rosalie said last week about how we as a community, or how we can look to work together versus always pointing fingers at one another. So, and I'm not going to use the baseball analogy how, that we were talking about earlier this week about, you know, no one bats a thousand. Okay? And in, and in, so I'm not going to go there. Okay. You guys did a great job on the community hospital. There's a lot of work, and again, we've talked to it. There's been a lot of frustration in the community, but ultimately, you made great decisions. You asked in-depth questions, and ultimately, what you did is you relied on the people that can give you the information, which is staff, the consultants that staff use, and the consultants that they use. When we're talking about water runoff, we're talking about hydrology. They have a hydrologist on staff. We'd be foolish to think that we're going to be smarter than that individual. So I'm glad we all recognized that that's what we need to go to. Let the experts be experts. And, and all your comments were, were right on when you said, but we have to do our due diligence, and that's what you did. So, great job. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Haney. Anything else? Nope. Boom, boom.